Our Sandy work session to order. Jeff, please call the roll. I always catch you up. You never know what.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Check in his email.
No, I didn't have my list of planning features pulled up. I apologize. Okay, Chair Crosby. Here. Commissioner Hook. Don't see online yet. Commissioner Wagner.
Nothing there at all.
Commissioner Coolen.
Here.
Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Myron. Commissioner Ramsay.
Here.
Great, and then we have Councilman.
Present.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker. Here.
I'm here too.
Here. And Mayor Holden.
Here. Do we have the Zoom meeting going?
It is going.
Because Councilor Walker and I are not able to access that.
Maybe we usually are.
But I thought usually we are able to access.
There aren't, there's no one with their camera on right now. That's probably why.
Oh, okay. Cool, and I'm joined now. All right. Cool. Well, tonight, I'll just do a quick review for our council tonight's meeting. We'll go to responses to the previous public comments. Just so you know, when I go to changes for the agenda, Councilor Sheldon does have some questions about our fee and lieu of the staff reports that we had covered. So we'll have a little bit of a conversation about it for receiving all the information we needed to at that point. We're going to do a proclamation on Arbor Month 2023, so that time of year again. On our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from March 20th, 2023. All of it's the business organs funding for San Rock reservoir repairs. The ordinances, we have a public hearing for water system master plan adoption. Your old business, we have that conversation on the modification of the park system development charges and fee and lieu rate implementation. And then we're going to have a report from our city manager around the evening with our committee council reports. With that, George, you want to kind of get the conversation started on our comp plan block one, policies?
Any assistance here tonight to give an update? Kind of go through those first block of policies. This is the first of three. All right, okay, so get comfortable because we'll be back with more comprehensive plan work sessions. And I think these policies were shared by email too. So this shouldn't be new information for you, but another chance to kind of dive into them. Get a good understanding of what's in there. If you remember several months ago, this process, council was interested in having input at several stages on the cockpit sort of policies. So. So this work session tonight is kind of in that spirit. And there's some good stuff in there to kind of cover and go over, so.
Great. Should I share my screen here then?
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Excellent. Well, thank you so much for having me. Happy to be here. I think the last time I was here was back in November of 2022. So as was just mentioned, the purpose of this evening is to provide an update on work that we've been doing over the past several months. That's a combination of some really interesting stakeholder workshops that I will report back to you on, as well as drafting goals and policies for that first block of comprehensive plan themes. So that's what we're going to go through. So yeah, I'll start with a quick process overview. You've seen some of these slides before, but I think it's helpful to just orient ourselves and the organization of information here. We'll go over the schedule as well, and this gives you a snapshot of where we are and where we're going. And then, as I mentioned, some project updates. So of course, this first portion of work was really focused on the visioning process. We developed a series of background reports answering the question of where are we now? So understanding existing conditions within Sandy and then also understanding where do we want to go? So that is our new community vision wide vision statement. That all leads into goals and policies. So how do we get there? And then that all combined will result in your new comprehensive plan, which is framed around your 2050 community vision. It includes information from those background reports. And then, of course, it includes all of the new goals and policies. So that's the organization of information and how they all fit together. We are currently in the mill and the comp plan will be essentially the end result after the next, probably in the next six to eight months or so. Here's another kind of snapshot of what that project schedule looks like. It's just another way of visualizing that graphic that I showed in the previous slide. So as you'll see, we are working through the comprehensive plan that has been informed by that community visioning and goal setting in the green block, as well as an assessment of current and future conditions in the gray block, which are things like your UEOA, your HNA, and all of those other planning efforts that are underway currently. There's also, you'll see a number of engagement and outreach activities are kind of happening in the background throughout this process that I'll speak to. And then the adoption for this work is scheduled to start in early or late fall 2023 of this year.
Sorry. Sorry. I saw the natural hazard meetings. Yeah, two of those. And I think for me and for many of the residents of Sandy, the key part of the comp plan is kind of the final thing that still hasn't even been developed. And that's the zoning map and what gets so what? And what are our policies around growth and things like that? Not that natural hazards aren't important, but I'm just a little concerned that that's kind of the thing that really does impact everybody everywhere. And I want to make sure that we're devoting enough public involvement, time and money to that, to kind of working on that thorny issue as opposed to, you know, natural hazards that are, I mean, we can be ready for them. Certainly, we can do, do better there, but if I had to kind of put the money as to where we put the rest of our public involvement here, I'm going to be putting it more towards answering those thorny issues of growth coming.
Yeah, certainly. So are you speaking to public involvement around zoning maps and code amendments specifically? Or about policy issues beyond just natural hazards?
Um, it's. And I'm still, I'm still not really clear. I know that we got goals, then we got policies, and then we got action items. And I've asked several times, at what point do we start doing the zoning map?
Right, so we had that conversation last year. I remember it. And the zoning map and your code amendments are essentially the implementing tools of your comprehensive plan. And that would be a next phase of work. So your comprehensive plan sets out the vision, the goals, and then the policy framework under which the zoning map and code amendments follow. So that would be a second phase of work, and that's not part of this scope.
Sure, but so, I mean, how much public, I mean, these, it looks like this is our public engagement portion, correct? Because it's attached to the open houses and stuff?
Yeah.
So what are we exactly, are we accomplishing? And I'm sorry if I said argumentative not. What, but what, what are we accomplishing if a natural hazard stakeholder?
I am, that's part of my presentation. I'm going to report back on both of those. We've done them and they were really.
This is only slide two.
One way to think about that framework and why I was including the scope. And it was informed by some of the council input we got on the scope of project is thinking about community resiliency. We're talking about a plan until 2050. What is the community going to look like in 2050 and how do we ensure this plan is sustainable? The city is sustainable, not just in the environmental sense, but everything you could think of in terms of what will help the city be a place in 2050? What are the threats? What are natural threats, other threats that can come about in that time period? And that can help inform all these goals and visions and policies that you have in your comprehensive plan by understanding that kind of framework of looking long term at what may be changing.
Yeah, I would, I would also say that I think the term natural hazards is a bit misleading at this point in time because what you'll soon learn is that those workshops were really built around the idea of resiliency. And so there you'll see that the conversations that were had at those workshops were based in, you know, conversations around economic development. They were based in conversations around growth management, around public health, around kind of social community and culture. So they really touched on a lot of very interesting facets that were really kind of circled, grounded by resiliency as a term and a thought process. Obviously, natural hazards and mitigation of, of natural hazards is a component of that. But I would say that it really, it really went far beyond just that, that theme per se.
We'll let you, we'll let you tell us about it.
Yeah. All right, here we are. Well, natural hazards workshop. So this, you know, was built into the scope at the very beginning of this project because at the outset, you know, there was a strong emphasis on looking at wildfire planning and mitigation efforts on more specifically. So I took that topic and ran with it and thinking about, okay, what does community resilience look like? Whether it is wildfire or economic development based in tourism industry that's maybe impacted by wildfire among other things. So that was where kind of the idea for these natural hazards workshops went. We have the Geos Institute on board on our team to basically help lead and facilitate these workshops. They are a small nonprofit out of Ashland and do a lot of community resilience planning and strategic planning all over the Pacific Northwest. So they prepared and facilitated two of these workshops. The first was held in December and the second was just held in March. We had about 20 to 25 various participants that represented a really broad swath of stakeholder and interest groups, both within the city of Sandy and then also regionally. And I have a very long list of the workshop invites and kind of who they represented, just to give you an idea of who was at the table.
How did you source? How did you attract, how did, maybe this is more towards staff, I don't know. But how did we attract these folks?
Yeah, so first of all, the workshops are really geared towards stakeholders. So these are people that are experts in their field that work in these types of things, whether it is, you know, Sandy Net or its infrastructure or its, you know, the Transit Board or the County Health Department. So it's folks that work in this field that have a unique perspective on kind of the social systems, the economic systems, the built systems, the environmental systems in Sandy and then also a bit more regionally. So the invitations were targeted. We identified kind of key, key people that work in various fields or represent various areas of expertise. And then staff went ahead and formally invited them to a workshop. It was a full day workshop. So this was not a one hour Tuesday night, let's get together and chat. This was a full 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM workshop with lunch catered, a full agenda all day long. I will say Jerry was there and I'm going to let him give a couple moments to speak a bit about what his experience was like. But in general, it was definitely, you know, targeted invitations and it was on people's work time essentially. So they were, so this was a different sort of conversation than say your broader kind of community engagement.
So. And I think we, I think we invited around 60 people, if I remember correctly. And I believe on the first meeting about 33 or 35 showed up. And then as these things naturally progress, it petered out to about 25 on the second.
Like, seriously, this is going to turn into policy eventually? I mean, were they made up of, I understand wanting to get professionals in the film, looking at Sandy resident right in front of you that seems to have participated. But I mean, we did have, a lot of these stakeholders were Sandy residents though? People who live in our community or were they mainly made up of select better or certified smart people who live in the field that just happened?
Most Sandy residents. Yeah. And so the way that these workshops are organized, the first one was collectively identifying and prioritizing vulnerabilities in Sandy. Here, I just have a workshop objective here. So local experts and stakeholders here to identify and prioritize risks and vulnerabilities in all major sectors of the community. Local knowledge and expertise is combined with science and projections to identify and prioritize local vulnerabilities based on just adaptive capacity here at Sandy. So data and information as well as localized knowledge are shared and a common understanding of impacts and vulnerabilities is developed. So that's what happened in the very first workshop. The second workshop in which all of the participants were basically re-invited to join in on was to, I basically worked together to develop solutions to address the high priority vulnerabilities that were identified in the first workshop. So the first one was about what are our vulnerabilities? And the second one was about what are the solutions or the strategies for mitigating some of the highest priority vulnerabilities in our community? So that was, and that was really, you know, both of these workshops were really fascinating and interesting in that there was a lot of cross-sector knowledge and information sharing among a lot of really varied areas of expertise. And so, you know, there was an identification of vulnerabilities, whether it was, you know, threats to the tourism industry or it was, you know, housing threats or et cetera. And then also identifying like what are the strategies or solutions based on different, different areas of expertise and also perspectives generally. And the way that the invitations were really organized and set up was, the idea was to have participants that represented what kind of in community resilience planning, there's five broad community systems. And those are the social, the cultural, the built, the economic, and the natural. So we really wanted folks that could kind of speak to all of those. And so just to give you a quick snapshot of like where, what, who are those participants? We're talking about folks from the Ant Farm Action Center, Oregon Trail School District, Sandy Fire District, you know, Northwest Natural, Chamber of Commerce, US Metal Works, County Health Department, the Sandy Historical Society, Todos Juntos, the St. Michael Catholic Church, Habitat for Humanity. So a really, really wide, wide and diverse set of perspectives that were involved in both those workshops.
Good question. Good question. So you invited about 60 or so and up 30 something, so somewhere around half showed up. Did you identify any gaps where you thought, oh, this specialty was not represented very well?
We were actually able to fill all of those five community sectors.
About weak representation.
Um.
If you have to stretch.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall like what, what sector we.
I think, I think the hardest sector we had trouble filling, well, not a sector, but business owners.
Yeah.
They're very hard, yeah. We, and we outreach to seven or eight different big employers in town. And a few of them even said they were interested and then didn't show up. So and that's, that's actually unfortunately been pretty consistent with other efforts we've made. So the CAC and other efforts that we've made recently.
So how did you fill that gap in?
There were a few business owners.
There was.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the larger ones we were looking at on the table were didn't make it.
It's okay. Okay. Thanks, unfortunate.
Yeah, Joe, do you have any kind of reflections on anything surprising or anything you want to share about?
I think the one, my one takeaway was almost kind of thousands of what Kathleen was saying. You know, about a planning commission, my orientation to the comprehensive plan and our current comprehensive plan says right on the title page is a land use plan. And so coming, going into those meetings, some of me, some of me beginning to think, what does this have to do with land use? You know? And I kind of had to conclude it's, it was focusing on the word comprehensive. And not necessarily land use, you know, because that's, that's sure you could.
Yeah.
Some would be more like that, at least let's cut to the chase and get to the zoning map. And, you know, but it was, it was very engaging and people were, were very much involved and it was fun and I do not envy the people that came away with all those sheets on the wall.
There's a lot of.
Put them together. There was a lot of words in writing.
A lot of passion, you know, such thought.
Yeah, so you know, the outcome of these workshops is there are, there is now kind of a new language bank to draw and develop policies from. There's also a lot of new interesting strategies that have come out of these workshops. These strategies could thematically make their way into the comprehensive plan as a potential new policy. Some of these strategies might be better suited to an action item or an implementation strategy. So there's a lot of work to kind of sift through the information that was gathered through these workshops. And you'll see that the comprehensive plan will certainly echo some of that work. There will be some of that work that came out of there that, that will fit better in other places. So we're really doing the work of, yeah, just kind of digesting all of that information and finding, finding its most appropriate place. So that was, that's my update on those stakeholder workshops, which were essentially the, the big thing that happened between when I was last here in November and, and today. I was going to move into the comprehensive plan portion, which is in your packet. It's a draft goals and policies. And, but before that, is there, are there any more questions around stakeholder workshops or?
No, we're good.
Great. All right, so review of the comprehensive plan process and block schedule. So to orient you, just what does your current comprehensive plan look like? And, you know, I don't know, maybe counsel, if you can share a little bit with me about, you know, are you, how familiar are you with your current comprehensive plan? Is this a document that you've seen quite a bit that you work with often? Or are you generally kind of lukewarm in terms of your familiarity with the document?
No, we love the font. I think we're, I mean, first of all, I always like to say this. I was here as a shadow counselor for beginning to end of this baby. But I never haven't looked at it since. I mean, I've, I've looked at it, but not very much.
Right.
And I think probably other than a couple of us, it's probably pretty.
As far as the plan itself, looked at it vaguely, but.
Yeah.
Map, one that Kathleen and Jerry had talked about, that's.
I read this about a year and a half ago when we had our first land use thing and I was like, what the heck is this?
Yeah. So obviously, a comprehensive plan is something that a planning commissioner would be extremely knowledgeable about. So we will definitely be leaning on our planning commission to kind of help guide us as we develop this work as well since they are kind of the first to pass through with this work. But just to give you an idea of the hierarchy of the content of the actual document itself. So we're, we've got our vision, our community wide vision that is going to provide our aspirational overarching direction. It describes our future desired state. Nestled under the vision are a series of goals. Goals will be our broad statement of purpose. It defines what the community wants to achieve. And then under each goal will be a series of policies. So that is a clear statement that guides a specific course of action for decision makers to achieve a desired goal. And then there may be some policies with implementation or action items that we're going to keep separate from the comprehensive plan. It will be more of like a work plan. It's, it's kind of, you know, what are the actions or the action items or the steps that need to happen in order to achieve this policy? This is kind of a, a more, more detailed level of information that typically doesn't make its way into a comprehensive plan, but it's kind of a really nice work plan to have once you have the actual document. And you will see, for example, an action item might be something like update development code for XYZ or revise your zoning map for XYZ. So those are kind of action items there. In your updated comprehensive plan, of course, we know from our vision statement that we have six key themes that came from the community. Under each of the themes, we have about, we're going to have a three to five goal statements. And then under each goal statement, we'll have about anywhere from four to 10 policies per goal. So that's kind of the, the level and organization of information. Um, apologies for the small text here. I just like to show kind of the organization of how we're going to achieve each of these blocks. So as I said, there's six blocks. We're going to work in, sorry, there's six themes and we're going to work in three blocks. So we're going to, we're going to work through two themes per block. And then this is, this is just a nice matrix that shows how the topic areas that come up in the vision statement for each of those themes links to the statewide planning goal. We'll see that there are a number of topic areas that speak to a statewide planning goal a number of times. But it's really just to kind of check boxes and make sure that we've, we've, we've have applied all of statewide clinicals.
Hi, question. So I was going through everything before. And you've got community, culture and transportation and infrastructure.
Yeah.
And then when I start looking through all your stuff, you have, you have the civic engagement and history and heritage. And then you have public amenities and facilities. And that, and I didn't see it on here. And I'm like, are they talking parks or, because that's next.
Yeah.
But you're talking about provide public amenities, facilities to meet, help meet the education, recreation, civic use needs.
Yeah.
And so I was like, how is, you know, how did, where did that come from? Why is it in parks, trails and?
Right, so that came from your vision statement that came from the community. So I think there's going to be a little bit of overlap between all the various visions or vision themes. And I think the, the one that you just spoke to is the one that will have the most overlap because civic amenities can be, can be couched under parks and recreation. It can also be couched under public facilities and infrastructure. But the way in which the community talked about these types of amenities in the vision statement kind of bridges both of those departments or areas. And so you'll see that we talk about civic amenities in community culture. We will also be talking about them in parks, trails and natural resources. So you will see that theme kind of come up again. We'll speak to it maybe a little bit differently under parks, trails and natural resources. But we're, we're going to speak to it in multiple places.
Okay, you might call it, you called it civic amenities over here and public amenities over here.
Yeah.
I think that's what confused me.
Yeah.
A little bit, because now I see that I do have it in there.
I can change that, so it's a little bit more what to. Okay, for sure.
And there'll be overlaps and other ones too, like transportation and infrastructure, all these. So we'll have an overlap with governance and growth management.
Yeah.
And housing and economy will have a lot of overlap, especially on the housing with resiliency and natural hazards.
Yeah.
So you'll, you'll see that.
Yeah, you'll see, I mean, what's, this is kind of an interesting approach to a comprehensive plan. It's not organized by these like concrete silo chapters, like how a statewide planning goal, plan, this comprehensive plan would be laid out. It's really organized by community priorities. And community priorities don't necessarily match one to one with a statewide planning goal. So this is kind of how we're organizing this information is by community priorities. And then we're doing our best to make sure that we've, we've connected ourselves to the statewide planning goals, but there will certainly be overlap. None of these themes can ever stand by themselves. They are always integrated and connected to all of the other themes. We can't talk about parks and trails without talking about natural resources. We can't talk about transportation infrastructure without talking about housing or, or economy. So we're going to do our best to kind of organize them so it makes the most sense, but there will be a lot of overlap in the, in the themes. And I think something that we'll, we're going to kind of struggle with is as we give you drafts of goals and policies, you'll be like, oh, like what about, what about, are we talking about this yet or what about this? Or I think one of your comments was, are we talking about this in parks and trails as well? And we will be, and there will, so I think it'll be really nice to actually see this completed as one full document. You're kind of getting it block by block. But I think as you see the second block come through, you'll be able to connect a little bit better the, the various topic areas.
If you're participating in the meeting online, please use the raised hand button if you ever want to jump into this. Thank you.
Great. Um, okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring our attention to is the comprehensive plan, obviously as a document, does not exist on its own. It is kind of the umbrella under which you compile the work done through a variety of other different planning efforts. So the comprehensive plan in an ideal world is completely and utterly aligned with all of your other planning efforts. The city is in a really excellent place right now where you have a brand new TSP. You have a forthcoming economic development strategy. You have a forthcoming EOA and an HNA, and you have a brand new parks and trails master plan. You also have a transit master plan. So there's been a lot of work that has happened in the city that must and should and should always be reflected in your comprehensive plan. So you will see there will be elements throughout all of these blocks. There will be goals and policies that come directly from other plans. An example of that in this block is your new TSP has goals and policies that we folded directly into the transportation section of the comprehensive plan. So there is one to one alignment there, which is always really nice. And you'll see in the next block, your Parks and Trails master plan will be kind of front and center in that Parks and Trails and Natural Resources component of the comprehensive plan. So hopefully, if you've been able to follow along with the TSP and your Parks and Trails master plan, there will be content. there will be content that you see in the comprehensive plan that looks familiar and that comes from these other projects. And it's, it's meant to be that way.
And just so you guys know that the numbers, there is an error on a few of these, so don't.
Sorry.
Like the TSP, for instance, is gonna be adopted this year. Hopefully it has not been adopted yet.
And the master transit master. Um, and then quick overview of how this block process works. Three blocks, two themes per block. We're gonna do the same process for each of these three blocks. Um, and I think, I don't know if I shared this with, with this, with you all last time. But the way this works is, oh, each block will span about four months of work or so. And in the four months, the first thing we do is the project team will develop some very preliminary draft policies. And then you will all have a review of that preliminary draft, which was, was great. We sent that out by email. So all of you had an opportunity to review, comment, mark up that preliminary draft of goals and policies. We revised those drafted, draft goals and policies based on your feedback. We then presented that information at our CAC meeting. We also have some targeted stakeholder engagement. Those are conversations with maybe folks that are connected to some of the topic areas in that particular theme, making sure we're on track, that we have the nomenclature right, getting staff to review and, and, you know, comment on whether we're totally off track or we forgot to mention this or XYZ. So there's some kind of iterative engagement happening as we talk, as we work with the CAC on sharing out that revised preliminary draft. We then get to revise that draft again and present that to you at this joint planning commission and city council work session. So what you see tonight is a reflection of the revisions you provided as well as the CAC feedback, as well as any additional feedback we got through any other stakeholder engagement work. Um, and so that lends itself to.
Before you go on, what do you want from us then? More feedback, more changes?
So the purpose of tonight is I want to make sure that what we, what you have in front of you, it's on the right track. I wanna, I wanna be able to share with you what are the changes that we made. Um, and then do you like, is this, is this good? Like, are we, is this a great first draft? Because essentially, I would hate for us to show up to adoption and you having seen none of this and having a ton of feedback on all of it. So you, you will have multiple opportunities to review and comment. The first review and comment via email was really helpful for us. We're here again tonight to share back what we did with that. And I think really more than anything is we want to just vet and confirm that this is on the right track. And that's, I think, what we need from you. I, I made the, the, the rest of the presentation relatively high level. It's a lot of goals and policies to review. I'm gonna just kind of go through the goals. But you do have the document in front of you. And I am also gonna work, just kind of walk through what are some of the key changes we made since the last time you saw this document, so you can kind of see its evolution a little bit. Um, and then, as I mentioned, this is not the last time you will see this draft in front of you tonight. You will also have ample opportunity to review and make any changes or revisions as needed through the adoption process. But in an ideal world, we get to a point where at the adoption process, everyone feels really comfortable with what's in front of them. Any questions? Okay. Um, so I will walk through the, some of the key revisions that were made to the draft goals and policies. I want to thank again, um, Councilwoman Walker Exner and there was one other person who was able to comment on our draft goals and policies. It was really, uh, it was really great for us to just kind of get that feedback and, and make some revisions. So thank you again for taking the time in reviewing that and providing your feedback. So the first theme is community and culture. We have three main goal statements here. One goal around civic engagement, one goal around history and heritage, and one goal around public amenities or facilities. So some of the key revisions that were made under these goals, and I didn't, I, I, they're in your packet, but I didn't put them on the slides here. We updated a bit of terminology, so we changed things like public involvement to community engagement. We did make a connection to urban renewal, connecting urban renewal programs to historic preservation and enhancement. Um, and then we also made a clear connection of the policies, uh, around co-location of civic amenities in response to a potential new recreation facility that could also be a community center and a senior center. So we clarified that relationship a little bit more. So those were some of the key revisions to that first theme. Is there any, if you have the, the goals and policies in front of you, I don't know if there's any thoughts or, um,
I have questions. I just don't know if they're better suited to throw them in a separate email or just throw them out here broadly for discussion.
Um, are they related to the goals and policies?
The policy.
Sure, yeah, of course.
It's like one dot one, what does it mean to be the lead body? Since the planning commission is the lead body responsible for slid, for facilitating community involvement in the planning process. Maybe it's the word planning. I'm, I'm, what is planning? Planning is a broad, in this context. And tying it to planning commission, narrow, what's that's lead, that leadership is about?
Yeah. So it's actually just articulating what the planning commission already does. This is not new, but the planning commission is essentially a body in Oregon that is.
Understand what the planning. And just, when it says, when we not capitalize the planning process, are we talking? Land use only?
Yeah, I think you're looking.
Do we just need the word land use in front of it and then?
Yeah, I think, I think what Counselor Hope has said is pointing out is, is a pretty good point is that it's not all planning processes within the city. It's, you know, urban land is playing process basically.
So some sort of.
So maybe just adding a few words.
Some sort of qualify.
Yeah. I think that's a good point.
Thanks. And on to the other cheese that was made on one dot two, um, in regards to the, um, I'm sorry, that was all on section one.
It's, so it's clarifying what planning process we're talking about.
And the land use planning process.
Yeah.
Great.
So you're covering two and three right now? Goals two and three as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gold two, uh, when we talk about the urban renewal district. In two dot two, it says increase prosperity and vitality in Sandy's downtown and surrounding commercial areas. I, I know that we're targeting with our dollars, commercial, but I think we're increasing the vitality of commercial and residential.
Sure. That language actually came directly from your city's urban renewal plan.
Yeah, that doesn't mean it's right.
No, it certainly doesn't, but I'm just letting you know where it comes from.
But as far as a policy goes, so.
So would you suggest adding residential?
I would suggest.
And policy number two dot two.
It's a net and I'm not going to.
There's residential in our urban area.
There is.
Hard time excluding that.
Well, I guess.
There are purposes.
Any in the surrounding areas is very broad.
Well, I understand that, but see, for me, when I read that and, you know, and we all interpret things differently, right? So, but when I read that, because it says the prosperity and vitality of Sandy's downtown, that to me is all encompassing. And then it's including as well as the surrounding commercial areas. That's how I read it.
Okay. Not a, not a big deal for me.
It isn't. And it doesn't mean that if you want residential in there, it could, it just, in my mind, it just encompasses kind of the whole thing without, without identifying a single.
I'm fine with it. I just, it adds like a step.
Well, how about this?
I'll say community about vitality.
That would be another word.
That would be included.
Okay. Um, how about this? I, what I want to do is I'll take down these ideas. I would hate to use the hour to necessarily like words. But I'll take the concepts and then we'll, we'll add them or rework that.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else on goal three?
Three on three, this, you're gonna see this theme from me throughout here, but we use the word maintain or increase or things that are squishy. Three dot three says maintain city services. Are we signing up for 50 years of keeping exactly what we have?
I wouldn't say that that indicates that necessarily.
So I'm looking for something that's more. Appropriate, you know, let us, you know, over 50 years, it's gonna change. I mean, number one, I'll move into that category and I may need a lot more, so.
Yeah. So provide city services.
Again, though. Where we are worse.
I, I, and that's why I just wondered. Yeah. But I mean, I don't want a wordsmith that at the end.
No, that's, that's fair. Yeah. It's gonna be a balance between.
I can send them straight to them separately, or I can get all your opinions. So Laurie says that, no, I disagree. It's like, okay, you know. At whatever the best is the time.
Policy question in here is for the councils, why this is a policy is for the next 25 years. Are you saying that the city will be in the business for, for providing programs and activities for seniors?
The, the question is not, I think that is it gonna be providing for seniors is gonna be what quality, what level we're gonna provide for the seniors.
Right.
I think that's what Don's argument is, is it maintain or is it provide? And providing leads me to think that there will be some sort of valuation that will, over time, may increase but may decrease.
But to Jordan's point, and this is where the wordsmith thing comes in. Is whether we're providing them or maintaining, there's going to, the statements about us being in the business of doing senior services and program.
Yeah, it is different.
And then when we prioritize the budget, what's the budget process, and even when it's not us, future council, they're gonna make the decision how much we're maintaining or how much we're providing, you know, those senior activities and programs. And I think it accomplishes what it wants to accomplish.
So three dot five uses a similar question. It says, uh, expand library services, services. I don't like the idea of an infinite expansion.
As the library liaison. I did have, that was an edit of mine because it, before it said something like just expand or something like that. And I put in, um.
We're working with Blackmanus County to expand.
Exactly. That's right. That was the change that I put in. I said, you know, because I didn't want us on the hook. I said, you know, it's, um, so I. Yeah. I said, you know, that's the county's responsibility.
And we also just let, you know, we did take that policy and we shared it with the, one of our engagements. Was to share it with the library director, just to make sure the language is right and like, was this the ethos? Um, and she confirmed that that was.
Bold clock was telling.
Right. But I think honestly, you know, when we're gonna talk about maintain, provide, or what it expand, you know, this is for 25 years. We're gonna be growing. If we're, you know, we're gonna have growing budgets, growing populations. If we're not using the word, you know, expand, provide for future needs or whatever, whether that's. I'm pretty sure that's expand, but. But yeah, it all comes down to a balancing act with budget.
This is probably some question that much of this applies for like.
Doesn't really, that, that's just to the code audit that we want to make sure that's.
I just want to make sure. I know like.
Yeah, if we had to write this clear objective, we'd have a completely different document in front of you tonight.
And I wouldn't be talking about wordsmith. We would be wordsmith.
Yeah. And you know, these policies, there's no prioritization in these policies. And because this is kind of a, a long range planning document, it is the work of various elected leaders at various points in time to be balancing and prioritizing needs within the community based on this plan. So there, you know, there's not one policy, the one policy may feel more relevant at some point in time than another. Um, and it's really, this is kind of where we capture everything and, and set a general direction. But, yeah.
The, the other thing to keep in mind too is if you look at our current conference plan, and I'm sure if you look at most around the state, there's always gonna be some policies that aren't achieved, for whatever reason, probably really good reasons. So there's nothing in this document that's, while we should get it as close to possible as what we have vision for our future, there's nothing saying like, if we don't achieve one of the policies, there's not gonna be like the DLCD policy place, or I hope not at least.
Yeah.
Coming down and, uh, saying like, you didn't meet policy 3.2 or 3.3. So just keep that in mind as well.
Yeah. That is a really important point, you know, it's especially important point in that this is what you hope to provide for your community. No one's gonna put the kibosh if it doesn't happen, but this is, this is how you want to lead and how you want to make decisions.
Well, and there's no way to tell like what's coming, you know, like in 20 years, we may not have libraries, right? Now, I, I hope that's not the case, but. Right, you know, so I mean, I mean, there's stuff in our current plan that was never implemented, so.
And we will like, you know, another part of one of these briefings is that we will have for some of these policies, some identified action items, um, that will kind of become work plans for various developed departments. So that will be really helpful. There will, there's some policies that will have really specific actions for.
And I, I don't want to belabor the point, but block three, the last one, the governance, growth, management, that is where we're gonna see. We're gonna have the EOA done at that point. We're gonna have the HNA done at that point. And that's where we can start to set goals and policies around what we need to change in those maps. Like honestly, that's, that's where we're gonna get to the meat of that.
Any other comments or questions on this, uh, this theme? Or these goal statements? Do we feel comfortable with the, the draft policy, goals and policies as they stand with some of those, uh, minor word changes?
Yeah.
For the first block.
Yeah.
First part.
Sorry for that. Yeah. Okay. The second theme of this block is transportation and infrastructure. So pretty meaty compared to the first theme. Um, and there's a variety of, uh, different goals here. In fact, the two, there's a lot of goals here. It's a combination of the goals from your TSP as well as goals from your water master plan, your stormwater master plan, municipal broadband, et cetera. So the goals include under transportation, mobility and connectivity, capital investments and funding, community needs, system management, environmental, transit, safety, equity and health. And then the second part of that is infrastructure, and that includes goals around water, around wastewater, around stormwater, municipal broadband and energy. So lots, lots in this, uh, in this section. We did not, uh, we made some light, light revisions to the language in the goals and policies for transportation. Those were the ones that we copied directly over from your TSP. Some of the key changes that we made there was, um, let me just pull up my notes here. We made some notes about a lot, making sure that the TSP is aligned with development or the TSP standards are aligned with development. We just kind of clarified that relationship a little bit in one of the policies. There's a couple of acronyms that we spent, we realized we hadn't spelled out. There was more emphasis on regional partnerships in some of those policies. Under the infrastructure component, we had some additional verbiage around green infrastructure. We also had a revised policy for municipal broadband based on some conversations with folks from Sandy Net. And then we also reworded a couple of sentences.
And on, and on these, just so you all are aware, so we had a lot of input from Public Works and especially the Public Works Director on water and wastewater and stormwater. And then we had a lot of input from Greg on municipal broadband, uh, transportation. We also had input from Andy with, for transit, uh, and then Public Works and then myself, because I'm very involved with the TSP. But, um, so we did get a lot of internal input because a lot of this in this theme is very, uh, technical and a lot of sounds, especially when it gets to the water and wastewater stuff.
Yeah.
Two comments on these. The two dot.
Yeah.
This one occurs two or three times throughout what we're seeing. I imagine we'll see it before, but anytime we're talking about asset management or maintaining our assets, we need to get better about the words we use to describe that approach. Because the word maximize the useful life is not good asset management necessarily. Because we have to take into account its efficiency, its effectiveness. Sometimes we use those words, sometimes we don't. So I'd like to see us standardize that, kind of that high level approach to maximizing, not maximizing, implementing good asset management, uh, which we can define a lot of different ways. One of the ways would be to replace it with plan, deliver, operate, maintain efficiently and effectively. There's other situations where we use language very similar, so.
Okay, great.
Just pull it up.
Yeah, for 2.1, okay.
2.1, yeah.
Thank you.
Seven dot five talks about emergency, um, response time if I'm not. Yeah. Emergency service response time. Once again, that's, I don't like the word improve because is it already adequate? Or is it only in some areas we need to improve that, you know, obviously as a policy, we need to make sure that we always, ensure that we always have appropriate, but I, I don't know that we're always for 50 years trying to make it better.
Yeah, that policy is interesting. This, I, it's actually, it's interesting pointed that out, because I was just looking at this. It's almost like that policy in it, in these, I think, I think it needs to be split into two. Evacuation route planning is totally different than. Evacuation route planning is totally different than emergency service response time and landing. Like, I think those are two different things. I don't know if you would agree.
Well, I guess I find that, that. Curious on it. Did we identify that there's a delay in our emergency response times? Cause when you say improve, that to me reads that there's a problem, that there's, with that we have response time issues. And I'm pretty confident inside the city limits, we have no response time issues.
I would agree.
So I guess, yeah.
I guess is it limited to inside the city?
My question, right, is we have however complained about. You know. EMT services. You know, county sheriff.
Right, but.
The fact that it falls under transportation though.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Like three sixty second bell.
Yeah.
One of the things that project does is improve connectivity to the high school in those neighborhoods to help with response times if necessary. Can imagine an emergency bluff and also would be packed, but now we have an extra access. So that's why it's probably the thing here. TSP that speaks to that, having better roadway systems or experience.
I can see that.
Make sure there's adequate.
Yeah.
We can also, I would say, explore that concept, just like kind of, uh, flesh that out a little bit in another. In one of the other blocks where we talked about, uh, hold on, I have to find the. Yeah, there's like in other themes where we can take the concept that we're stuck on and just extrapolate it a little bit more. Sure. Because I think that. What you just mentioned, it being nested within the TSP speaks directly to building a roadway system that when you do so. Results in this optimal outcome, which is great, better response time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Jordan is correct. I, I do remember there were some input in some of the public outreach we did for the TSP that. Like due to the congestion on highway twenty six, especially on like holiday weekends, there has been some issues with vehicles being able to like get through. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the public info we received. Uh, but I, I do think evacuation route planning, especially around wildfires and other emergencies is a different policy. They, to me at least.
Sure. Yeah.
Or maybe we keep it together here, but then we speak to it more specifically in that natural hazards section. Because this is about connect, like transportation connectivity, doing multiple things, including emergency response times and, and. And aiding and evacuation routes. And then we can talk about what, a rack evacuation routes more specifically on its own in the natural hazard section.
Well, let me talk about it with the connectivity piece and the transportation. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's. I can, I can, I can see where, what they're trying to say. Yeah.
I got a couple of questions on. It's kind of a play question on. On the transportation step number. Disappeared. Um, that BBO, Orsted Village thing is pulled, is, is, you know, brought out. Why? So I'm just not sure. Yeah.
This is three point four. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's mainly because the BBO is codified and we're just wanting to make sure that. The transportation network in the TSP aligns with the video. And we found some instances in the two thousand and eleven document where they didn't. And so in the new TSP that we'll be adopting hopefully soon, there will be more consistency between the two documents.
And so this. Are we sure the BDO is what we really want in the TS, in the new TSP?
I mean, unless we were somehow. Like get rid of it.
No, I'm just, you know, I mean, if it's everything we want, that's great.
I think it is.
You know, but the TSP is also, I mean, that was done so many years ago.
The video plan is at least for at least the transportation layout, it's actually done very well, I would say.
Except where we put, uh. Henderson.
That's right on the, that's also.
Where it was planned and where it ended up having to be, which is, yeah, making sure that they're feasible. Okay. And then I had one other thing about, oh. It, and maybe it's already kind of included in here, but my, my deal is like ensuring that ODOT. And for that matter, the Oregon School District who generates a lot of traffic. Uh, those, you know, call them partners, call them other agencies, whatever you want, and developers, those three folks. Uh, pay their fair share towards our, uh, transportation system. Is that already included in here or, I mean, it's kind of mentioned something about maximize the use of state and federal funds.
I think that's.
But, but on the other hand, that's kind of like, you know, as if we're going after grants and stuff rather than, hey, ODOT, you gotta pay up, you know? So. If there's a way to sharpen any of those to ensure, you know, again, to ensure that ODOT is. That we're not having to just go beg for grant money, but they are actually paying their, their share of it.
I think it would be in that section on capital investments and.
Yes. Point three.
I mean, we could, we could call out specifically ODOT if you want us to.
Well, yeah. Um, the other thing is the, the development part, and maybe that is where. Making sure that the developers are. Putting in their street connections and all that. Where's that?
See three, one, ensure that locations of arterials and collectors for future development are feasible in our TSP and are guiding local street development as the city expands.
That's the Gunderson Road policy.
Let, making sure that they're feasible, but then. I guess the part that I just want to make sure that we have in here, so again, somewhere is that, you know, the developers, you know, sort of like the, you know, DeBarco Road, whatever that. You know, that the developers, if it's our, in our TSP, you know, that they're supposed to be implemented. So I don't know how you say it or where you say it, but. That should be one of our policy stated policies. Because.
I mean.
It's been challenged in past.
Would that make, so one thing I would ask, so would that make more sense in the governance and growth management section to have? A goal around. You know, development and paying their fair share and then having policies on what that means in there.
I, I think so, because that is actually spelled out specifically in that vision statement for that thematic area. What areas it is governance and growth management.
Future block. So I'm looking at the time at six fifty seven. I have one more point, just because words have meaning. I, I don't like, if you go to infrastructure and energy, I don't like policy one point one, adopt a progressive water rate structure that will encourage water conservation. While I do agree that water conservation is important, I don't like the idea of just the water rate being that too, that, yeah.
I think we're doing a good enough job.
I think we're fine.
I don't like that as a policy.
I'll be bringing something up in my council report that's concerning, so.
So we, we want to establish a conservation or potentially encouraging a water, water conservation program, but it does not really need to be related to.
That's punitive.
Don't get our connection done. We may have to adopt such proponent measures, but yeah. Yeah.
And I, and I think policy one point eight actually.
Charging horrendous rates to.
So I think we can just get rid of.
We just, at a certain point.
No.
Yeah. Maybe we just need a bunch of clarifiers.
So if we're jumping ahead. I mentioned that asset management, I'm three, six, under the infrastructure and the energy, that's where that line occurs again. So once again, if we can standardize around that language.
Plan, operate and maintain.
Well, whatever we decide to use.
Should we use that?
Well, this one.
This does plan, operate.
It's part of it. Notice it doesn't say anything about efficiently or effectively. So it's still an incomplete statement.
Is it that maintain word that you have a problem with?
Depends. I mean, maintain means flatline.
I, I feel.
If that's what we want, then that's.
Yeah, well, I'm just making sure I'm tracking with you. That's all.
But, yeah, in the case of the asset management, it's really about making sure we're getting our best value for our dollars from how we're spending it. Under goal five, um, energy, and I'm sorry I didn't capture this earlier, but. We've got this, I don't know what the, um. Never, sorry. Under. Seems like we're missing some. Reliability and, and. Let me, let me back up a little bit. So we talk about kind of things we can do, but, but I think there needs to be a couple of policy statements or a policy statement talking about. How we cooperate with Northwest Natural PGE to make sure that the. That energy infrastructure itself is robust and redundant. So that we don't have large blockouts. And so forth. I mean, as, as we start to look at our. Commercial opportunities, industrial opportunities down the road, hey, making sure that, that infrastructure is very robust will be critical. We start, you know, five dot four talks about, or five dot three talks about EV charging. And we're, we're going to put bus chargers down on the, in the bus barn here soon. Those aren't going to be lightweight loads, so. We need to start partnering with those entities to make sure that they are doing what we need to, to make sure.
Yeah, that feels very relevant.
And if you remember, we, during the fires, we blacked out the south part of town. Proactively, which had no. No proximity to the fires, but it was all because how PGE had wired them up. And that's when was there, where if we worked with PG practically, we'd get them on separate feet and potentially not have to shut them down.
Is your conversation about us producing energy or is our conversation about prioritizing and determining how those. Existing entities like PGE will be directed within our city limits. Cause I really hesitate to say that we're going to produce.
No, no, no. So this is part one. This is about how they supply. They're a service provider that's city franchising. And it's.
Moving things underground, doing things to protect that.
Bringing in second circuits, so instead of just feeding them. So that's part one. Part two is we need a goal on, uh, developing solar and battery storage standards for residential use. We don't have anything around planning. Code for what's going to be acceptable, whether it's a commercial solar farm in our city. Or whether it's a rooftop for everybody else. We need, we need something.
Solar battery planning for residential use.
And commercial. You're looking at me kind of like.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where you're going with that.
Code wise, I mean, if somebody wants to put a bigger solar panel in their front yard. I, do we have a code that would prevent that?
Oh, I see.
I don't think we do.
That's, that's why I'm asking. I was trying to figure out where you were going. Yeah.
Or we've got commercial property lined up, industrial property sitting down there. What if they turn that into a solar farm? Is that, are we okay with that?
Right.
It has to be, so there's a farm.
So we do.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, we do have some locations that are currently, but, uh. They can't put a, like a standalone structure in, in front of the main dwelling unit. So we've been asked about putting solar panels in front of a house and we've denied that. But I do agree with you. It's very limited to what we have.
So if we're not in fifty years, I mean, you're talking micro grids and all kinds of things.
I feel like policy five two actually speaks to that concern. Uh, it speaks to it broadly, but really there it's where we develop responsive. Development code and standards that encourage energy efficient design, energy concerning features in new development, redevelopment, retrofit. So I think that really speaks to that.
If you add the word generation and storage, then I agree with you.
Okay.
Right? Cause it's different.
Sure.
And we, and we will, just so you know, in the, uh. Like, I'm linking all of the vision, but that, the, uh. The resiliency section that you'll be seeing in a few months, that will have quite a bit of information on PG as well. With wildfires. So that's, it's not exactly what you're speaking to, but it will have information on collaboration whatsoever.
Yeah, but I'd rather do it this way than all at once.
I only had a format, a formatting, uh, comments. Wastewater?
Yes.
Is there a reason why policy two, one, two, two are bold?
Yeah.
Where, what, what's bold? Great. Any other last comments or reflections?
Thank you. You've done a lot of work.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I really, I mean, really appreciate the conversation. See, it, it's meant for this specifically. So, um, certainly do not hesitate to, to, um, share your, your feedback and your thoughts and it's, it's meant for discussion. Um, we have some key considerations and I, I don't know how relevant they are at this point in the conversation, but, um, I mean. Definitely the first one, um, you know, do you feel comfortable with this draft? Uh, and, you know, are you, do you feel familiar with it? Um, and are we, you know, are we good to, to move on, I guess, is a question for you.
Does planning, you guys, I always feel like when we do these joint work sessions, regardless of who we do them with, we've met, we, we take up all the air. So, and do you guys have anything that you would add? In one, okay.
Jerry is one of our greatest. He's been through thick and thin.
I think for, for me, the only, you know, yes, I'm bullet one. On the, on the second thing, again, going back to what I started off with, it's just, I'd like to kind of have us, um, Jordan or. To talk a little bit about, you know, that big thorny, you know, issue about how much, you know, how we do growth and density in this city is. The real, you know.
Yeah, but it's.
The issue. I just want to make sure process wise, we leave enough time, we have enough public involvement planned around that. And we have enough time and thought and process to address that issue. I don't want, you know, we've kind of spent a lot of time, months and months and months doing these first two blocks. And I see that calendar and it's like, we got, I don't know, what, eight more blocks or something? And those are the very last two. And I get it that we don't do the map at the end, but we certainly do the policies that, that derive, that, 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 uh, the map is derived from. And that's where, you know, those particular policies that I guess that it's, you know, whatever they are. Let's see, uh, housing and economy, is that where you put it, I guess?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we have a lot of time for that housing.
Then the only thing I was just going to add to that though, is that a lot of that's going to be dictated by. The legislature and, and some of the policies that are coming from, from the state. So, I mean. I don't know how much input.
Well.
Does it matter?
Does it matter?
I think, I think there is things we can be putting in there to be more, uh, you know, to, to know where they're playing chess and, and anticipate that and do some.
You know, I will say, I think the community visioning process spoke to that through and through. Like everything that we heard through the community visioning process was about growth management. Everything we heard. Um, so I think that there's actually been a significant number of conversations around that. And I think what you have found as a, as a community is that you, you're going to be toeing the line between. Preservation and development. And it's going to become down to a question of where that happens. And that is a map question, but I think that what we can do is in the cop plan, we can, the, the. Section on housing and economy, there's going to be multiple kind of arms or, or things that are in, inputs for that section. It's going to be state legislation. It's also going to be a reflection of the HNA and the EOA. So you're going to have data around your housing needs and your economic development needs and your economic development strategy. Those are going to be the things that are going to be reflected in that housing and economy block. And those are really the, those are the things that speak to growth management. That's how you do growth management. It's how you plan for housing and how you plan for economic development. Um, and that comes from data from your EOA and HNA. It will come from looking at what statewide legislation is all about and then massaging it and making it fit Sandy. Uh, so there's going to be a little bit of work of collecting all of the pieces. And making it fit and reflect Sandy based on the numbers that you have and the community visioning work that happens.
I'm just not ready to assume that we've lost, you know, local land use, uh, whatever you call it.
Control.
Control.
I love your optimism.
Well.
That's true. Be a case law decision that comes out, judge something, you know, elections, right? Kevin's point. All right. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. Block process, just to remind you kind of what our plan is moving forward. Um, you should expect to have or, yeah, see a preliminary draft of the goals and policies for this next block sometime in June. Um, so we'll do a similar format to what happened, to what we did. Um, so we'll do a similar format to what happened to what we did last time is we'll share it via email and collect your comments and track changes and. Yeah, that's where you can have your preliminary first glance at that coming in mid-June. Um, we we do have some online engagement happening. We'll have an online survey live for the next. Several next six months or so, essentially through the the end of the third block. Um, where we're just kind of still in the process of collecting big ideas for how do we achieve this vision? How do we, how do we get to these goals? Um, so we'll kind of infuse that information throughout all of these blocks, kind of what we get from that online survey. And then, of course, there's a lot of events coming up this summer on that we hope to have a presence at like Mountain Festival, Farmer's Market and. Part of the Long State Parkway and things like that. So we we do plan to have a presence at all of those events and. Yeah, continuing to to engage in conversation around how how we get here.
Thank you. With that, we'll close out this work session. We'll convene at seven fifteen or something. All right, let me go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Uh, so our city council meeting tonight will. We have had nobody submit either online or in person for public comment. So we'll be going straight to the proclamation. Then we'll go to the consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from March twentieth. Also has our business organ funding for Sandra Cock reservoir repairs. Your ordinance says we have public hearing waters and master plan adoption. Old business, we got modification of park system, development charges and fee and lieu rate implementation. Then we'll round up the evening with a report from the city manager, which I'm sure will lead to a little discussion. And then our committee and council reports. But Jeff, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmate.
President.
Council Smallwood.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exner.
Here.
Council Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. All right. Changes to the agenda. Council Sheldon has some questions about an item on the agenda. The one thing I will note for council. Since we start debating the issue, I'm just going to go keep it on the agenda. We might as well. But there's some legitimate questions that Council Sheldon will make that staff report.
Yeah, so my, the issue is around. Be in lieu of an SDC truck. And some of my concerns, I I'd like to see it as I think about it, we'll do it from the agenda. The logic behind that is. I think there's some unanswered questions specifically around the financial impact that these would have. Specifically in. When you look at what the staff is proposing to be recommended. What what are the, what are the costs of the city? Where is that lying for the number of houses since twenty twenty two? And then to Chris's question, that doesn't answer it here as well. You know, what was the change in property values from the time? None of those questions. I I feel like a lot of the questions that we've asked during the last session aren't answered in trust. And if I'm incorrect, or it's going to be said that. I'm all for the discussion. I just think that. We we talked about moving the goalpost. And to use my terminology, I feel like I can't even decide where we're setting.
Do you want to address some of those questions now?
Yeah.
So we know if we want to keep going.
We're going to have an adequate answer to it.
Um, Council Mateen's question regarding the the cost of land and homes, I think with property values was one way we looked at that. It's. Was in the presentation that Michelle had put together on the slides, three hundred and eight percent of compared to three hundred and sixty one percent.
So that is going to be addressed in the staff verbal.
Yeah, yeah. And then I think the revenue impacts in there as well. On one of those slides, obviously projections are are not a simple science to do. You know, assumptions that we have to make on whether projects move forward or not. I think it's.
And I may have missed a Jordan too, but the other thing is since we're going to draw, since the line is proposed in October. I did I miss? Is there a number of houses or housing units that are proposed in here? That number of applications, because we're just talking about ones that have been already received. We know that number. I didn't, I'd be a missed it, but I didn't see it.
It is equal to the number of units that have been submitted. Before October third that are vested, right? So it's like five hundred eighty seven.
So is that six hundred? I mean, I've heard this number six hundred bandied about.
Sorry, yeah, I was thinking you're used. Yeah.
Seven hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you are you.
And so.
Conversion.
The amount of. Dollars that seven hundred units represents, again, I think the Deer Point Park would not count. So those two hundred units are. Already accounted for with park land, but everything else. So five hundred units times the cost per acre. Is millions of millions of dollars. And so that's the kind of the number that I really wanted to. I I thought I was going to be able to see when when I saw the staff report that's not in there. And I think. I don't think that any there's anything urgent here. I'm. Open to looking at a glide path for some of these developers. I'm just wanting to make sure that we have all the information in front of us. And so. Putting this off for, you know, a couple of weeks or a month doesn't seem like it would harm anybody. In the next, you know, month to try to get that information and understand. You know, and then the other thing that I kind of are what the meeting minutes said was that we would be looking at options. And what for being a little bit, what we only have is one option. And. If there's others of the other things out there, I I just want to see more information brought.
I guess what I'm hearing now is I'm not hearing anything that that precludes us from having a conversation about this. And then, and then if the conversation leads to a table in the decision until the next meeting, well, that's that's one thing, but. I'm already hearing enough of things that could develop into more afterward that why would we cut ourselves short for even having that conversation later? And that forces us to vote on. Okay.
Let me turn my information.
Cool. All right, with that said, um, let's, again, nobody has submitted for public comment. Um, and we don't have any response to any previous public comment, correct?
There were several public comments, but they were either commenting on the proposed park project. Um, and then there was a couple of comments about this this topic on the SDCs and people.
All right, so let's go ahead to the proclamation of Arbor Month twenty twenty three. Whereas the state of Oregon recognizes a month of April as Arbor Month. And whereas trees reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property value to enhance the economic vitality of this areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the city of Sandy is now recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And desires to expand its tree plant due to stewardship practices. Now, therefore, I stand fully in merit of city Sandy do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty three as Arbor Month. Man, deep up maintain in there. I don't know if I was going to be able to before. And the city of Sandy and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Month. And to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart. Promote the wellbeing of this and future generations dated this third of April twenty twenty three. All right. Well, then, thank you. Appreciate it. And moving forward to the consent agenda, unless there's a discussion, I'll entertain a motion that be adopted. Is there a second? A motion by Council Sheldon, a second by Council Hopkinson to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nays. Motion carries. Moving ahead to ordinances. Um, I will now open the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty three dash oh six at seven twenty six. I now call for any extensions of the hearing body. See none, I will now call on any conflicts of interest from the hearing body. See none, Kelly, AJ, please give us.
Yeah, I'm just going to give a a brief staff report and then turn it over to AJ for some additional information.
Sheriff first.
So I'm just going to share some of the background in how we're meeting basically the requirements. In both the development code and then by state statute for adoption of a master plan as part of the content. And then I'll turn it over to. AJ for some additional analysis or information more specific to the plan itself. Okay. So per planning goal eleven, and I'm not going to read all this, but basically you have to have. A facilities plan and a water mask plan is one of those required facilities plans. Um, it's it's a required document to be adopted as part of the conference plan. You know, we have one on water, we'll have one on sewer and then the transportation facilities, one is the TSP that you're most familiar with. And those are adopted as part of a conference plan. This one is the water component of the public facilities plan requirements that must be adopted as part of a conference plan. And it complies with the administration of the OAR that's listed here on the second ballpoint. And then also before you tonight for adoption is the two thousand sixteen Water Management Conservation Plan. Uh, which is in compliance with another OAR that is listed here as well. Uh, this document was completed in two thousand and sixteen, but was actually never codified by ordinance. So that's what we're doing tonight as part of the ordinance. We're also proposing to make a few small modifications to title thirteen, which speaks to water and sewer to specifically reference this plan. Um, and then that reference will be carried over into the development code with a clear and objective audit. And that will be changed in title seventeen when the current object body is brought before you later this year. So that's what these three bullets face that line. We did notice the Department of Land Conservation Development, also known as the LCB on January eighteenth. And that's basically notifying them that we're adopting this as part of our conference plan. We also published it in the Sandy Post and on our social media page prior to the hearing date, all in accordance with our development code.
Thought we were going to start stating money and not post.
Yeah, I haven't got around to making her that change yet. So you are correct, Mayor. And then this was a recommendation from the planning commission on February twenty seventh. Uh, that the city council hold a legislative hearing, seek any public input and approve the ordinance. And then I'll turn it over to AJ. Let me bring up yours, AJ.
Sorry, AJ, if you prefer, I can share the slides. Yeah.
You can have this seat if you want.
Okay.
All right, so this is the short and sweet version, my short and sweet version of the presentation you guys have seen previously. So basically, purpose of a master plan, first and foremost, it's a resource for our planning and public works departments and the council. And helps us determine SDCs for the water and things along those lines. It's a document that actually brings together what our water system is and brings all that information in one place. So. People in my position further down the road can look and see. What we have available to us. Uh, it plans our system improvements. It shows the financial impact that's SDCs and it is itself a regulatory requirement, but also helps us to meet. Regulatory requirements for water. Uh, inside of our master plan, we have a rundown of the system. We have our water requirements, which is our demand and our treatment requirements for water. We have planning and analysis criteria, so population and projections of water demand in the future. Analysis of the distribution and supply system, and then it all kind of comes together with the meat of the plan, which is that capital improvement. So I see these as an engineer, I see these as our highlights of master plan. It develops an inventory model of our system so we understand how our system works and can find all the flaws within it. And it helps us to develop our future main quality quantities. So now you'll see that. Craft here in a moment. Uh, it shows our deficiencies and it helps us complete an alternative sourcing analysis. As you know, we have a few different water sources available to us and some of the are not. And this goes to do. And then, of course, the improvement plans is actually. So. This is basically the model of our system. We're looking at the entire city of Sandy, our existing water system. Said to move it out to the east there where water actually comes from. This is what our model actually represents and. Basically is what we need to run the model on our system. Here is our supply and demand projections, as you can see, with our existing. With our existing connection to Portland water going away. That's kind of a major issue for us when we get that twenty twenty seven mark there. Also, what you can see with the orange and blue here is that once we cross that point. We are required to continue using Portland water as our system will not keep up with that. Sorry, was that? MDD that is. Maximum daily demand.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a map showing our system deficiencies, which is actually, from my point of view. Very good for a system of our age. We don't have a whole lot of pipes that need to be upsized. We don't have a whole lot of. Flow issues and most of those are related to fire flow, which is easier to manage. Here's our capital improvement plan itself. Uh, it's just a list of projects that we need to handle and then the the range of when we need to be completed. Helps us plan sort of feature work within the system. I see these as the highlights, Portland Water Bureau, the new connection to filtered water and all the treatment plant, all the creek treatment improvements. Uh, another major thing is that our system is low on storage when we reach future conditions. So that will need to be. Managed in the near future here with a sighting study and then construction of additional structure. On top of all that, uh, we found that. In order to make our system more resilient, we have the opportunity to add a pump station, invest a loop, which is allows us to serve our entire system off Portland water if necessary. So if there is issues with our existing sources, we are able to get that water to our entire system and stay in emergency condition. And then actual implementation of an annual replacement program to keep up with our system. So we don't have major failures in the future or. A large group of failing banks that we have to deal with. It just allows us to be proactive. If anybody has any questions for me.
All right, same then. Well, good. Thank you, AJ. We'll go to follow testimony guidelines. For those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. This official state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to consider by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. Do that either before or after you speak, email your materials for recorder at ci.sandy.or.us. Staff, make sure you have it properly processed. To offer public testimony, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and indicate you would wish to speak. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone. File star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll now call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive three minutes to testify. The city reporter will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. And as a reminder, our council will require each person to state their name and address for the record. And I'll be calling for any testimony on the proposed resolution. Please check online.
I may look at mine. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, thank you. I am now calling for the staff recap recommendation.
Is it off?
I call for a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion by Council Sheldon, a second by Councilor Walker to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nays. Motion carries. And now close the public hearing, seven thirty six PM. Discussion. They just want to make, all right, a call for the first reading.
Okay, Mayor. Okay, mayor, this is ordinance 2023-06, an ordinance adopting the 2022 Water System Master Plan and the 2016 Water Management and Conservation Plan and amending chapter 13.04 of title 13 of the Sandy Municipal Code.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading? Is there a second?
I'll say again.
There is a motion by Councilor Sheldon and a second by Councilor May to approve the first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. Jeff, will you please do the second reading?
Yes, this is ordinance 2023-06, an ordinance adopting the 2022 Water System Master Plan and the 2016 Water Management and Conservation Plan and amending chapter 13.04 of title 13 of the Sandy Municipal Code.
Is there a motion to adopt the second reading? Motion to adopt the second reading, or second. My Council Sheldon to adopt the second reading. I've given the second to Councilor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. You gotta be quick, guys. All right, old business modification, park system development charge, SDC and fee and lieu rate implementation. Hello, Rochelle.
Share my screen.
You walked in.
Yeah.
So I will promote you to panelists now.
Put together a quick presentation and I'll go through it as quickly as possible. Great. Okay. Just a quick refresher.
There's a slideshow button.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Council, for the opportunity to come back with the SDC fee and lieu. So just a quick reminder that we did have a conversation March 20th that talked about the system development charges and fee and the increase. And the council had a discussion at that work session that talked about the two different fees separately. And so taking that information, staff, it's coming back to tonight with two different options for consideration. So on March 20th, one of the discussions that the council had was regarding STCs. And the conversation was centered around maintaining that current fee that went into effect January 1st, not increasing that fee July 1st and then revisiting parks, STCs at a later date, along with all the other STCs when that data came up. So the result of that staff created a resolution 2311 that talked about and basically encompasses those three points. And then the second conversation was around the fee and lieu. And then the first point here, there was an answer to one of the questions that council had asked about a comparison of property values in 2004 to 2023. And the total assessed value of land over the last 19 years increased by 308%. And then the fee in lieu increased from 241,869, was about 361% increase. So you can see that those are relatively in line and the feeling of seems artificially inflated because it hadn't received an evaluation and increase since 2004. So council had requested that we provide some options to accommodate individuals who had already submitted land use applications. So staff came together. We talked about a timely way to get this information in front of council because we heard last time that some of the developers were waiting to make decisions based on potentially what was going to happen with the increase. So brainstorming and coming up with a way that was a timely way to get in front of the council and also a clear and equitable way to talk about individuals that were currently in the pipeline. The proposal and the resolution was to take the fee and lieu and cut it in half. And based on information provided in the March 20th, we provided some comparisons that talk about what the rate looked like at the full rate of 869,000 at a quarter of a rate and then also reduced by a half. And so we did show some of those implications for a two-year period of time from 2023 to 2025. And so resolution 202312 is up for discussion about whether the council, if that's something that you guys are interested in adopting this evening, but the proposal is taking that 869,000 and cutting it in half to the reduced rates. And so flying through this presentation, but there's two pieces of recommendation. And one is up for discussion whether the council wants to evaluate, codifying and adopting the first resolution, which was 23, the 2023 11 was the parks, SDCs. And that was again maintaining the current rate of $8,897, which is for single family resident, not increasing those fees July 1st and then revisiting the SDCs along with the evaluation of all other city SDCs. The second resolution up for discussion tonight is whether the council would like to adopt resolution 202312, and that's the modification of the fee and load. And then again, it's taking that full cost per acre of 869,000 and essentially cutting it in half to 434. And this would affect all existing lots, tentative lots for approvals and then land use applications currently under review that were submitted prior to October 3rd. So that's addressing potentially some of those folks in the pipeline that currently have applications then. So and then that resolution also talks about bringing that cost per acre back to council once the city starts accepting land use applications for new sewer connections.
Prior to.
Yep.
So the first half of this council, I believe that there's broad agreement on from our work session, which I'm talking about the positive, the SDC until and we agreed that we would want to do this very early winter, late fall next year to have a holistic conversation along with the other city SDCs.
Yeah, I did want to point out, I think we were talking about next year's winter, not.
That's the one we're at.
Not this. So the 20, I guess, the 24, the fall of 24 or or the 25, or we're talking about six months.
We're talking six months. Yeah. And so that, so the bulk of this conversation, the role decision tonight for councils around the fee and lieu and the modification of the fee of the park dedication fee. You know, I do think it should be at least noted, right? We're in a moratorium. And so it does allow a clean break between those who have been engaging in the planning process and what they may potentially have to pay and it's a pretty drastic increase and what they've been able to plan for. And this moratorium does allow us, I know there's questions off this group hack, but real, I love that 30,000 foot level. This does allow our developers to adequately plan coming out of the moratorium for what the new environment and fees going to be. So I understand there's other considerations, but I do feel like this is a pretty fair way of doing this. That doesn't surprise anybody and allows, you know, the future planning, development, planning for development to have a clear understanding of.
I'm going to try to attempt to answer some of the previous questions and Kelly's here tonight, which I think will be helpful as we kind of talk around the language with land use planning in different stages, the land use planning. I think some of the things I didn't realize on the 20th, that's been helpful for me to understand. And speaking with Kelly is for a lot of the projects that are, have had their land use approved and have a final order. Their fee and lieu is, is already baked in. They're all, they already have that in the final order. So changing from October 3rd to a different date or changing to a platted, you know, if the, if the development is platted or not, what doesn't affect those projects, right, Kelly?
That is correct.
Let me just clarify, to understand. You're saying that if it's in a final order, what they have to pay in B and L of that the new
rate when it.
Rate doesn't apply.
That's correct.
And do we know how many units are in that category?
I don't off the top of my head, it'd be the majority of them.
The majority of what?
The majority of the 714 dwelling units that are vested or are going to be vested if they get a permit.
Someplace in the 600s.
I wouldn't say that many. I would say somewhere in the mid 400s to low 500s. I don't, I don't, I haven't done the math. So I don't, I don't want to give you bad information. It's definitely over 400, I would say.
Over 400 of the number we're talking about are already in at the lower rate.
That is.
Or at some rate, yeah.
And the reason, and the reason why is because the fee and lieu is calculated through the development code. And so when we do our analysis with a land use decision, we put in the rate at that time and put it into the final orders. And that's how it's been done ever since I worked here in my understanding, ever since the fee and lieu was adopted into the development code. There might be an option to do away with that in the future, but that's how it's always been done.
No, that's just, I think it, I don't think we understood that in our last conversation.
Because I mean, so can I just get first of all clarification from our legal standing?
Please. Let's get hands flowing here.
Can I add one caveat to that? And I think this was what Jordan was going to add to it, except for some subdivisions that they add a second unit.
Second.
A duplex.
So, so then they would.
They'd have to reapply, right?
No, so some, this is where it gets really complicated. Some subdivisions like Cedar Creek Heights and Ten Eyck Grim, for example, those two. Because we didn't know how House Bill 2001 would play out. And because we didn't know, speaking with legal at the time, not, not, not our current attorney, but other attorneys that burial is our human. We thought it was the safest approach to put in conditions in those final orders that if they decided to increase the units to a duplex, this is what the rate would be. So those final orders have what the rate would be in those two final orders. So that's locked in for those two subdivisions. And then other subdivisions, so like Jewelberry Meadows, where you heard from Jim Rays or Jewelberry Ridge, those were done before we even knew House Bill 2001 was going to even be proposed on the legislature. So those don't have any conditions related to a duplex. And therefore now we can charge additional unit as the multiplier in the development code states. So we have multiple different scenarios here. It's very complex, very complex.
I think that's part of what makes this so difficult.
Right.
I think going back to.
So I just want to just ask, clarify with our legal team and so is it, so what I'm hearing is that anything that's in a final order, if we put the fee in lieu of fee that is due in the final order, it cannot be changed at this point, regardless of the, I mean, that's, that's what my question.
Unless there were an application to modify the decision, it could not be changed. That's correct.
Okay.
Thanks. I just built in on what Rich asked upfront at the beginning of the meeting was, it seems like the analysis of who's impacted without us doing anything and what this change would mean to the others is really crucial to knowing what we're voting for.
So Kelly and I had this conversation today, tried to distill down some of these questions. Besides the un, kind of the unknown on some of these, the Jewelberry Ridge and the Jewelberry Meadows, which you heard testimony on because they have projects they want to go move forward with now with duplexes and they would be charged the higher fee now unless the resolution is adopted. The other two projects that would be impacted that wouldn't otherwise, because we have two multifamily developments that have submitted applications prior to October 3rd, but they don't have approved land uses yet. And so changing to say a platted system or a system where you have to have land use approval in the resolution would impact, I think, 123 total dwellings for those two projects.
How many?
Hundred, I think it's 123, 124.
That sounds correct.
That's two different multifamily units.
Yeah, Cascade, Cascade Creek Apartments and State Street Homes. So it's a 123 apartments. So the, I think the financial impact, if you cut the fee and lieu in half, assuming they would have, they would pay the fee and lieu, Kelly.
They would both of those, yes.
Yeah. So you would have, you would calculate it based on, and basically just cutting the, the per acre fee in half and times that by dwelling. And I think I came up with like 700,000. I mean, these are pretty expensive bills for, for big developments to pay in addition to their SDC.
Yeah, so I just, we're here first. Yeah, so just a follow up. I still, the numbers are swirling and I think I heard two, maybe four different subdivisions depending on who and what. I really, I guess I'm asking why we can't have that written down and on paper and visible to us to understand that the dollar impact to future SDCs based off of yes vote at the half, at this half rate.
And we could, we could definitely put that all in writing. I mean, it's all in land use documents that are public record, but like, I could compile all that. It would take a little bit, like, we're not going to do it tonight. And I want to make sure the numbers are all correct. I wouldn't want to give you some number that's off by a hundred thousand dollars. The one caveat though, is you're never going to fully know how many units because we don't know on some of these subdivisions if they're going to have conversions to duplexes or not.
So they're going to have what?
We don't know for a fact if they'll have conversions to duplexes or not.
It's saying it was to.
Correct.
But all right. I understand, but. I just had a question that Kelly recently just said. Anybody that currently has an application and that has not planned for duplexes, if they were to now change and ask to subdivide that, that land, there, that's something that's new after the city council has made its change to be in lieu. Cause it's happened after the fact. It's not before the original voter of October 3rd. That's a change in their, in their order after the city council made its decision. It's post that decision, right?
Not in accordance with the legislation because I, I have to allow a semi home or duplex on any lot of record. So it's actually not a land use permit, it's a building permit. I get where you're going, but yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, so I, I think to Chris's point a little bit, he asked how I was, what I was thinking is to me, again, we're, we're making this decision to lessen the burden on a plan, on a, on a business plan that developers need to move forward, right? So just tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong, right? They, they already have this plan in effect. So now if I decide I want to go and add six duplexes to my plan, that's a new business plan, right? Those six new duplexes, we're talking about a new business plan. But these numbers, they are, no, is that, is that, I'm just trying to make sure.
For lending purposes, I would agree with you. The only thing I would not agree with that on is that and I'm not, I'm not trying to say this is right or wrong. I'm just saying this is the kind of facts is that when some of these people went out for loans, say like state sugar homes reported to apartment units. I've been working with them for like a year and a half. So they had all the assumptions under the old rate. Now, we always put in all our documents, these are subject to change. But I think as the mayor pointed out, I don't think many people expected them to.
Go up 300%.
Sure.
Those 42 units are already there. So they decided to somehow, and I think we're talking about apartment complex, this might not be an example, but they somehow decided to go add 52 units, another 10 units, those 10 new units is essentially a new part of their.
Correct. Yes.
And so and they, and they understand when their business model, when they were taking their numbers to their, their, their finance guy, they should have had the 800 and some thousand, 869,242 dollars factored into that. So by moving the goalpost a little bit, that's not really moving the goalposts on that. Right? Because that was already well established for them back in October when we passed those.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say on that is for that individual or that company, they submitted their land use application early August with the old fee structure and then we adopted a new fee structure in September. I haven't, they haven't had a decision rendered. So there's nothing in a final order yet that says what they owe in fee and lieu.
That's interesting.
You know what I mean? So they're, they're still subject to the increased rate.
Is there, is there a number on that application that says how many units they intend to build?
It's 42.
Okay, so 42. So, and I guess that's where I'm trying to go. I'm not trying to lead you down a path or anything like that. But to me, that's, that's, that's where that line is, right? When they made everything, when they went and filed that business plan, when they went and filed for that land use decision, they intended to build 42 units and pay X amount of dollars. And I can agree that up until that point, that, that's a fair assumption. But I think if they decide to go and add another 10 units or they decide to add. That that's a fair assumption, but I think if they decide to go and add another ten units, or they decide to add duplexes. Then our ordinance should be that, and that's on them for not having that business, that number in there, so.
I see what you're saying.
That's where I kinda wanna know is. Before I can make a decision in my mind when I was reading all this. I don't know how many units we are talking about, like. Um and and then that kind of even muddies the water even more. Because I think that it should be whatever that initial land use application number was. If they add to that, you're subject to the additional fees. If you take away from that, I mean. We're all good there. But I agree in the business model, that I was, that they planned on this amount. But anything that comes on after that, after October twenty three, that they decide to add, whatever the process is that they come into your office. I think that should be subject to this. And before we get into our way to do that.
You're gonna hate me for my answer.
Your answer is your answer, that's the right answer.
So some people have been really, I'll I'll just be, like, I'll just use Mac as an example. He's been very smart in how he's done his construction planning. So he he put on all of the separate utilities for all of the lots that he knew he wanted to put duplexes on. We've had other developers that have bought platted subdivisions and now are deciding to add duplexes. And so those subdivisions don't have a separate utility line running to every lot. So I would have to somehow go through and determine. The date on which construction plan approval was made for those different connections.
But isn't it based on the plat? What was it?
Not not to answer, not to answer.
It's not, we don't, if if I have a single fam, if I went and got a plot for a single family. And I decide to go change that to a duplex or maybe you. There's no, there's no difference in the in the in the plat?
That's correct. The plat stays the same, the only time a plat would change is if you're then trying to divide it through central four five eight. But if you're just, if you're going from a single family home, think of it this way, it's like a commercial piece property. We have all these uses and they can either put a gas station there or a convenience store or. Kind of my hair salon, they're all just permitted uses on that lot of record, right? So what House Bill two thousand and one did is it says, here's a lot of record for a sink for residential. And now you can put a single family home on there, or you can put a duplex on there. And so it's the same thing with like a commercial piece property, I can't dictate to them that they can't do that. And so once they have a platted lot of record. Then it's just a building permit to get the duplex.
Well, I think what he's asking, Kelly, is when they submit, when they submit that to you and they say, I'm gonna build forty two units. We have a date that that's been approved for them. And then if they come back and ask to add forty two more units, cause they wanna duplex the whole thing. There's a new approval process for that, which which indicates a new date, you have a reference point where you can separate. What they were approved for originally versus what they're asking for after that October thirtieth.
I mean, yeah, all the, all the, all the subdivisions you're looking at. Now, I won't say that. Most of the subdivisions you were looking at were all approved with single family homes on every lot. There are a few that they got their approval duplexes.
That's right, and that's right, I think we know that, we know that, from what they came in for it as. So then we know when, we'll know if they changed that, because we have that on record. Whether it's, it was second change the plat, but it's gonna, it's gonna change your approval process and planning, because they're gonna have to submit a new application for for duplex.
Uh building, right, yeah.
Building, right. And that's gonna generate a new date that's post the October third. A new fee.
So that works really good, except that some of these contractors, developers minds. They were planning on doing, let's stay with your forty two housing examples. Of dividing a certain percentage of those things into duplexes. At a time using the house bill to be able to say, okay, on my plan is is to charge a certain amount of money. For these houses, except that I know in my mind, I'm gonna say that's called fifteen of them are gonna be duplexes. And so as soon as I get approval, that will. Instigate my application for the duplexes. And in that calculation, that developer is saying, okay, I know what the, that particular fee and lieu is. Before if everything got changed and and now suddenly it's double. So that's, that to me says that there is some confusion and some planning about how that process. Would work, thinking about it before we made these changes. And since we did make the changes pretty drastically, Joe. Uh I understand it has with some cold feet on several developers about what to do next. Not just the duplexes, but the other houses, the single families. Because they knew they were gonna try to make some extra money for the duplex, but now the duplexes look like they may be off table. Because they've gone from uh maybe twenty grand to almost seventy grand.
But they were betting on a game.
Everybody does that.
The game goes the other direction.
So here's the other thing that it does, it's put. We have said and legislature has said that we wanna make more housing available. And the moratorium aside and all that kinda stuff. So what we're doing here is we're putting a cooler. Ice cubes on developers' desire to build more. Houses and admittedly, I'm not happily with the fact that they can put these high density. Uh duplexes on what I would consider a single family, but that was one of the intentions of this whole hospital was. And we said we need to make housing more available, more affordable. And by adding these new. STCs, we're ending at the loose, we're saying, you know, we're gonna charge you a lot more money, which puts. That hesitation on these folks, so they figure out what these calculations are. And on top of that, as we do this ramping up and and. I'm not so sure, I'm not against the ramping up portion, but we're ramping up depending on. Times, amounts, uh which kind of housing you're building, there's a fair amount of confusion about how that calculation is going. If we're confused a bit, you can believe that some of these folks that are applying for. Developments are also struggling to figure this all out, I. I really advocate for what Donna has talked about, let's see something on paper that shows me what I'm voting on. I'm not sure I still have it all in figured out yet.
I don't, I guess, to your point, I understand. I I I don't understand. I look at exhibit A and it has a, when it comes to the SDCs, it has a very clear outline of what they're gonna look like all the way to twenty twenty four. So there's a, there's an over ten year plan in here, and then, you know, the the fee and move. Is something that we brought up, all we did is use a consultant to bring our fees up. To market value for modern day, so the fact that they've been getting away for nineteen years means for the past. I don't know, fifteen years they've been getting discount. Um and now all we are doing is catching up to really where we should be at this time, and so really if we do it right. Moving forward, as land values go up, let's say they're they're eight hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred forty two acre. As the values in Sandy go up to eight hundred and seventy thousand, and that's your fee with. I mean, really, all we're doing is catching up, we're not, we're not throwing curveballs, we didn't. We didn't come up with this number arbitrarily to to to, you know, get anybody or anything like that. Um these are consultants and and honestly, it's, it's kept up with the market value in what uh you know, housing prices have went up. Three hundred and eighty, three hundred and sixty one percent, we're, we're right there, we're just catching up. It shouldn't be a shock, is my point moving forward, correct? And and just first, I wanna say thanks to the staff, thank you for answering my questions that I that I brought up, it helps me understand. The market value change between two thousand and four and today, even though I said I bought a house here, don't buy, so I knew what it was, right? I feel very comfortable with the, with what we paid a lot of money for consultants to tell us to do too. I'm very comfortable with that new number that we came up with, um both for fee and lieu and SDC. My only, my only sense for bringing this up was my uncomfortableness with everybody that was in the pipeline. That had projected their business plans out. And and they got, they got pinched by a change we made really quick and really fast. And I know they got a benefit for the last fifteen years, I agree with that. But I I'm asking, can we do anything going backwards for those people before that date? And you you've offered a pretty good plan in in I'm sense and to call to your point. Um people aren't building in Sandy because there's a moratorium right now, it's not just an ice cube that we're doing. Uh they're not building, right? This is the best time to make that kind of a change. Um the financial impact is Kelly already said, um well, he didn't say this, but he said most of this stuff of the seven hundred homes. Already baked into their plant, their plan, so um this isn't gonna have a huge fiduciary impact to the city. The fact it would only be an incremental growth, because if we had made no change, we'd only be receiving what we had prior to that that change, so. It's a, it's only the positive effects, it's just not, not a lot of jelly beans in the basket, it's a little bit. For the people that were already there, and it makes a lot of developers that were currently building in our city during a during a pandemic. When we changed the rate and doubled or tripled it, we're we're giving them a little relief, um it helps them. Which helps us, I think, is, so I'm okay with not voting today too, cause I'm a data centric person. I like to see numbers, if Kelly can put those together for us, we could actually see it. We could do this next, next meeting, that's fine, but I wanna thank the staff for answering everything I asked for. Um and allowing me, mayor, to put on record what the people that were calling me about, asking for relief from. I think you've offered a viable solution, so thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with all of that.
Alright, Kathleen?
Okay, so. Still gone. I've learned a lot of new information tonight about the fact that the final orders are locking some people in, because that's news to all of us. And then. From where I sit, having a an approved plat is kind of a handshake with the city. Here's what we're gonna do, here's what we're gonna put in, here's how much you're gonna have to pay, here's the road you're gonna have to build, pipes, blah blah blah. That's, you know, that's, now, even with an approved plat, they don't have to pay that fee and lieu of right now, they have to pay half of it. And then they can delay the other half of the fee and look to the building permits, correct? Okay, and so. Having the numbers, I agree, is really, you know, critical, and then. And then what I'm hearing is that even though we have these approved plaits, we have all these additional things that are coming up. And again, that's where I get it that we can't say no to that, but it's certainly an extra. Application and process and new set of rules if they apply. I I really wanna see, you know, who's already got stuff in their final order, how many of those? I wanna see, yeah, I just wanna know the numbers for the people that the apartments or whatever they are, that don't even have a final plat yet. The two thousand ones, the uh duplex stuff was like two thousand nineteen, so part of me is like, you know. If they haven't figured out what they're doing in that fill pass in two thousand nineteen, I'm not too concerned about. You know, this catching them unawares, it's been around for a while. But for the multifamily stuff, it's not even approved yet, and you know, we may want them to build more roads or, you know, or whatever, and I. I'm not too concerned about. The financials of that, again, if, you know, until they have an approved plat, it's still just an application. And there's all sorts of things that the city can require them to do that would increase their costs. Before, you know, and I can't imagine they've got everything all locked in with the banks, because they don't know what all, they're gonna be required to do anyway, so. Anyway, yeah, I I really wanna see the numbers and and that's kinda where I'm leaning as far as, you know. I'm okay with giving some glide path, and apparently they already have a glide path, I'm not in favor of giving a glide path to the folks that are adding stuff on after the fact. But anyway, getting all those numbers of what was approved in the. Final orders, what was added on after the fact, when it was added, and what's not even in through uh final approved plat yet would be helpful. And and like I said, when when you were talking seven hundred, I kinda did my little spreadsheet numbers, cause again, two hundred, those units in full run. Uh have already been allocating uh parkland to us, so seven hundred minus two hundred is five hundred and five hundred. And again, I assumed that, you know, I learn new stuff, but even just doing that was, you know, anywhere between, depending on if it's multifamily or or. Or the duplexes or single family, it's like three point six to four point four million dollars for five hundred homes. So it's a chunk of change and. We usually approve about eighty five to a hundred units per year, is that right, Kelly?
I think when Jordan and I do, it was closer to a hundred and twenty areas.
I heard eighty five, ninety, okay, just hundred, hundred, whatever, but so when we're talking about, you know, seven hundred homes. That's like, you know, six years into the future that we're kinda giving this, you know, bonus giveaway. So when we talk about we've been behind for so many years and we've got all the, you know, and that doesn't even account the moratorium. But but reality.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, is that if we've got seven hundred homes and we only, you know, do a hundred or a hundred and twenty a year. That's multiple years that we're gonna be, again, behind the eight ball on trying to catch up with that like two thousand and four cost. So I'll shut up and hope we can get some numbers and table this for now.
Oh, no, I would love to hear.
Well, just on on remember of all those units, though. When you start backing out the ones that have the fee and lieu already in the final order. You're you're getting down to a much smaller number that the new rate actually.
So wouldn't be anywhere near that, yeah.
So I wanna go back to our House Bill two thousand and one conversation where somebody could maybe come in and now. Create a duplex where they they couldn't, and the suggestions or the conversations we were having is that maybe. That would create a new point in time where we charge the new fee and load. I, we have had a lot of conversations about our unhappiness with House Bill two thousand and one. And the fact that we would love to not have to do that. Under House Bill two thousand and one, it says it's to remove unreasonable cost and delay. If. Can we put a fee that makes it unattractive? To somebody to subdivide. So yeah, I think, I think the answer is no, so I think we need to. To weigh in on on whether or not.
When we, months ago, when we first talked.
I agree, so so I just, I I'm, my point is that the the model we were thinking about as well, if if they. That's a change with their contract with the city, so therefore they would be under the new fee. I I'm curious whether we can even do that from a defensible perspective.
Just analyzing, yeah, right, right, so just drop this out, I think. You're hearing broad consensus as to what the council would like to see happen. Tampered by, let's make sure it can legally happen, right? On on what the process is, but I think you, what we're gonna look to do is put this on our next agenda. It's not gonna be table indefinitely, so if there's any hopes of that, uh that's not what's gonna happen, we're gonna put on our next agenda. Um with some of these things clarified and uh the direction that we provided, if you have something more.
I just have a point of personal clarification. So if we go back to, and I'm not trying to get into any debate, so I just, this is clarification from my own mind. So if we go back to um the first recommendation, which is that we maintain the current SDC rate. Which is the one that we voted in back in October, the eight thousand, eight hundred ninety seven dollars and nine cents. Are we looking at all three of those options? So so when I, when I see this, or I'm just what we're tabling, right? So we're maintaining that rate. So just for, we're maintaining that rate, but then still moving forward with the increases over time, or we're just maintaining that rate period. As a singular item. Does that make sense of what I'm asking?
Putting that rate and and then making a decision late fall, early winter about what else we're gonna do with that rate. After we holistically compare it to waterways.
But we're currently, we are currently maintaining that eight thousand.
So so let's clarify this, I moved the table this agenda item until our next council meeting in its entirety.
That's fine, cause it won't matter.
Second sec, we vote and then it's.
I I don't know if it is, and that's why I want, I have like no planners, yeah. I I think it would be, I think it would be nice to do it next meeting, but I don't know if that's realistic or not. I mean, we would have to, we'd have to put together a whole nother staff report.
I think we've been kicking, guys, I mean, we've now kicked this, we're kicking this can. And we have, we have, you know, there are folks that are waiting.
I can actually, yeah, I don't mind voting tonight either.
Taking in this money between now and and maybe two meetings down the road. Or with this moratorium, like, are we really, like, is this the time to kick the can for a month to get a good, accurate number, staff report? While also recognizing that Kelly lost all the staff lines. I'm just throwing that out.
I I don't wanna over promise.
Can I ask one more question? So for those of you who are wanting numbers. So for those of you who are wanting numbers, so the way that I understand this right now is we have, we have a rate. We're wanting to half that rate by P for people who already had things in the queue, right? So. I guess I don't understand if we're looking to charge them the four hundred thirty-four thousand for their fee and lieu. As opposed to the almost nine hundred thousand for a fee and lieu for everyone that was already in the queue. I I guess I'm confused why this body wants numbers. It either applies to people or it doesn't apply to people.
I I think part of the problem is, from my viewpoint, is that I don't think we all understood what we were voting for a month back. Don't know that we all understood how much it was going to be for some of the different developers that stood up here. Last time we talked about it, how much that was going to be. And and now what we have is is we have this. Desire to make it easier on some people who are above that four hundred and whatever.
Well, I understand that, but I guess so kind of what I'm hearing, what I was hearing in the conversation was that there seems to be, and maybe I maybe I misunderstood. But an appetite to go ahead and do the four hundred thirty-four thousand for everybody that was in the queue. And then everybody moving forward, we go to the eight hundred and sixty-nine. So if that's the case. And there's consensus among this body, I don't understand why we need numbers at a later date.
Fair, but I think I think some of that has to come down with, that again, it's where are we setting this goalpost? Because if we, this isn't clear, if we talk about all submitted land use applications. And for one, the the thing about the final order is kind of new information that wasn't, that wasn't known. But the second piece of that is if we're, where are we going to draw that line? Because if we talk about submitted land use applications and they come in, they add forty-two additional housing units, that changes the game. That's not factored in. I'm sorry, that to me, you're you're accountable to the sixty-nine, twenty-two.
Well, if they come in, if they come in. Right, I hear you. But to his point earlier, when when you guys were discussing that, he was, he was qualifying between it actually being a change or it being just a business of a building permit. If it's a building permit change, we can't do anything about it anyway, right? It falls under the old rate. If they are. So I guess, so I guess what I'm trying to say, so I apologize for that, but is that if they if they have to reapply and it changes the land use, then to me, yeah. They'd they'd be subject to the to the new rate. That's how I understand it. So again, I guess I'm just confused confused why we want numbers. This seems to be clear to me. But maybe I'm missing something.
Because we don't know what the numbers are. How many fall into what category?
Well, but why does why does that matter? We can't be punitive to somebody and say, well, yours is okay, but yours isn't.
Let me let me be clear with what what it matters to me. And it matters to me because what they're not paying. Our our city residents are going to have to pay to make up for it in the future with growth. But let me finish, let me finish. And so I I answered to the city residents. I understand.
That application is basically. To the developers.
That's an overstatement.
I'm speaking for myself. I'm not going to speak for you all, and I don't want you to speak for me. Okay? What I'm saying is that my concern for the numbers is to understand what what the finance. First of all, the requirement for doing ordinances is that you have the financial cost. Whenever I've seen the ordinances in this body, it always has the financial cost. Here's how much it's going to cost the city. That's not in this staff report. I want to have the numbers. I want to know what the financial cost is. I want to understand how much we're giving away. And and I get it, it may be fair to give away. I I can I can buy.
I don't think that's what, that's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is this, this to me seems like, and and again, maybe I'm missing something or or and if I am, then then please clarify. This seems like a black and white issue to me. You either fell into the under and got your application in before this, or you didn't. There's no in between. So so by saying I want to know how many people did versus how many people didn't, it doesn't change anything.
Okay, let me, let's.
It either applies to them or it doesn't.
Good point. Let's ask Kelly. If somebody had an application in, but not a final.
Am I missing something?
If they didn't have a final approval and we raised our. Water SDCs or our road SDCs, what would they, would they have to pay what what they did when they submitted their application or when their final plat approval? Or or when they had their, what is it, the final word?
Yes, all the all four of your SDCs you have adopted are regulated by the P schedule. And so you pay them at time of building permit issuance. The only thing you don't is the fee and limit, and that's because it's written in the developer code. And that's why I said that's how it's always been done here. It sounds like you all might want to revisit on a future date if that's when you want it to be calculated or not.
No, they should all be the same.
But that's how it's always been done. My point was, I can definitely do all this and I and I want to do it all. So I know too. I just don't, I actually do have a very heavy workload right now, and I just don't want to over commit. And so I will try my best so to bring it before another meeting, your next meeting. But my only issue with the motion was that. It might have to be tabled to that first meeting in May. That was my only.
Right about that. I'm celebrating my wife's birthday on seventeen. It's really important.
I know. So it is.
Birthday that.
Yeah, just to recap now. I think there's a legal question here that the council's been circling around is if we say proceeded with the staff recommendation for rolling back to October third and to reduce rate. Is there a way to. Charge the duplexes the higher rate, which would still give those developers a break because they're paying a cheaper rate on one of the original, right?
And, yeah, but just not to not to mince words.
Yeah.
It's not a focus on the duplexes. It's a focus on people who want to change their plan after the fact.
Yeah.
And if it's a duplex, they're fine.
But that's all you can really do.
But that's not what the focus is on.
But that's that's, but you, for example, but the multifamily can't come in and say, I want to do fifty units now because that would that would be a new landing site. You can't do that, right?
But I mean, if you were, I think the idea is if it's a change. From what the current business model is, right? Because we're trying to be, we're trying to be business friendly in this, right, the business. And so that's that's really where we're trying to go with this a little bit. So I I mean, I guess in that logic, if somehow they could figure out to go from. A ten thousand square foot lot and make it combine a couple and throw another house in there, single family, that would help too, right? I mean, I I just think that really. We're talking about duplexes and EUs and and that because that's what they're going to do. But I think anything that's a deviation from what their original business plan was is subject to that. That's kind of what we're trying to say. We're not trying to pick on one thing.
No, 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 I'm just, yeah, but reducing down to there's not a lot of options unless you have a landing supplemental besides the pathway you have under two thousand one.
To clarify, they would have to pay double SDCs on all the SDCs for duplex, right?
Yeah.
So we're not singling off parts.
No, but I would just been focused on our conversation on the theme, Lou, and then working with Kelly, we'd go through the list of what the. The or the the applications that have been submitted after October third or before October third and where they're exactly at in the process. And, you know, what projects have it in their final order versus not. And, you know, there really is only two or three subdivisions that don't and then would have the opportunity for doing the two two thousand one project. So those are kind of hard to project on what the the revenue impacts might be, but we could, we could try to make some assumptions.
Oh, I I can get you a table. It's just, I don't know what I what day. It's gonna be soon. It's just. Okay, so we don't have to have an official vote to table. So what I'll do is I'll work with staff to get this on the agenda this and this weekend. And it'll be quick. It'll just might not be next minute. All right. Thank you. Thank you for all the work on that.
See my.
Jordan can get to this next announcement fast.
After all that, what's gonna happen next?
You know, you know what, Sisters is growing. All right, moving forward, a report from our.
Yeah, can I give a couple of other updates before I get to that? Just a few, just a few things. Just want to mention that we do have a new permit technician starting tomorrow, right? So one of those staff members that Kelly sorely needs, Jan Reed will start tomorrow. She's coming from, I think, Mount Hood Community College. So happy to have her joining us. Sharing news that we did have another police officer resign today for personal reasons. And so that's breaking news. So we do have two vacancies. So we're back in the mode of when you get back fully staffed and.
There's a report on applications for the first stuff.
Do we have, yeah.
Yeah, we're we're reviewing it tomorrow, so we'll probably have a good eighteen minutes interview.
Can I have a, just a point of clerical, the date on that on the city website says twenty twenty-one? So it might be updated to twenty twenty-three. Yeah.
Wait next year, just go straight up.
I actually tried to enter the website twice because it said that it had closed and but it said twenty twenty-one. So I was like, that's odd. I just noticed it last night, so I'm sorry.
And then Rochelle and I are meeting with the property owner later this week off of Bell Street about a possible donation there. We also have another donation conversation, land donation off of Bell Street, one of the the properties there.
By the high school?
Yeah, on the other side of the like the wetlands. This is, this has come up before them.
Oh, that.
It's the Miller property.
You mean the BlackBerry?
And other other options there that we're exploring. Still working with the county on the other property donation with the Sandy River Park. So I've reached out to the county planning department and the county administrator, trying to work with them on that with the property owner.
It's not our, it's county property.
Yeah, the property that he wants to develop or or build something on his county property.
So he wants to donate a portion of it, build a portion. And so the party would donate Sandy, but the party would build on his county.
Yep.
Well, no, it, no.
So are we gonna have to annex?
It's not in city limits.
The county, right, no, the the property that is on the river is not. Well, we, we want it, we want it. It's outside the UTV. Okay, and yeah, so this topic on the agenda, so going to counsel about staff have have been informed that I will be. Leaving Sandy, it's bittersweet, obviously. I will I will miss Sandy dearly. Done a lot of great things in in four years. It's hard to believe it's only been four. I don't have a date for you yet. I will, as soon as I I get one. Or, you know, I will honor my contract for a thirty day notice, of course, and as much time as I can to have a a strong transition here. I know we have a lot going on. I want to support the team and council as much as possible. You know, my family, we're relocating to Central Oregon. We have family there. You know, our kids are entering school age and all that. It'd be helpful to have have more family around for that. And so, you know, by the school years, our our target to to find a place in Central Oregon. We'll have time for good for goodbyes, so I'm going to all that. Like I said, I'll at least be here for thirty days. It's not much longer, a few more, a few more weeks than that. But yes, I I will miss Sandy dearly and staff and and the council. They've been fantastic. It's not an easy decision, but thank you for for all your understanding and kind of being understanding for this process. So raises a lot of questions about transition. Obviously, I'm happy to help the council through this. Obviously, they're given that, you know, typically takes probably four to six months to fill a city manager position. That go through recruitment, that you'll need a an interim or an acting city manager to kind of bridge the gap between my exit and the appointment of a. A permanent city manager. And so there's different options, you know, and I think we've talked a little bit individually about that. For how to kind of pull together maybe a council and make a team and and look at the city attorney, the HR director on both interim appointment process, but also the permanent process as well.
So first, you know, we have plenty of time to thank you for all of your work and everything. I will start with thank you, you know, thank you for everything you've done for our community. You know, since I've been clued in on the news and we have all these meetings, I do continually think, well, crap. About Jordan here to figure this out with. So, you know, your first day was my first day. It's gonna be really weird for me personally to not have you here, but you know, we have a lot going on, but we've also accomplished a lot in your your time here at Sandy. You know, the highlights being in the lead to our next conversation, just being a lot of the staff hires and the, yes, just the development of the staff that that was here when you got here, you know, and. And and the opportunities I think are that are in front of them, you know, as a result of a lot of that mentorship and work and and hire. So thank you. Thank you for all that. And so I've had conversations with a lot of counselors and and thinking through, I do have. Some kind of recommendations I like to put in front of us as a council and kind of see where the the conversations go. One is, is the inkling I get is that the consensus, I can correct me if things I say are not correct. But consensus of council would be to do a wide net search for for a city manager. And so I I do feel like, especially with the timeframe that Jordan gave us and knowing how long it could take. That we ask Angie to start the process of of identifying a a partner firm. That we would work with and set some search and develop a process for us. We we all kind of agree on that first step.
Get an idea about what it costs for that, because I know they're not cheap.
I mean.
Sisters can afford it.
I'm sure there's an SDC for this.
That's a percentage of the salaries, right, Angie?
Sure.
It's in the range of twenty to thirty. Probably thirty nowadays. My number's probably outdated, but I think it's probably thirty if for.
Well worth it. I agree. So with that, I also would encourage if you're an internal staff member who is interested in applying for that position. You should certainly engage in that. And I hope that nobody on our team takes our interest in casting a wide net. Not interested. You know, for the position. This is not a matter of not loving the talent and leaving the other talent here in Sandy to pursue that position. It's just a matter of making sure that we do what's right by our neighbors and stuff and and make sure that we get the exact right person in that process. So with that, the the next thing though is is that it's just not as seamless as that. We do, we will need to develop a process of bringing up an interim city manager to kind of allow the the trains to run on time. I would propose that we put together, and I I have ideas to be on, but. A small committee of council to work with Jordan and staff to develop a process. In which we would pick an interim city manager to present that process to our council. And if that process is amenable to our council, we will proceed with the process of picking a a interim city manager.
I was gonna be, my question is, one of two things. One is, do we have the power to direct a point and interim? Instead of going through a hiring process? And then second was, do we have the authority to double fill? Jordan's position while he's here for process of training for that direct appointment if we're allowed.
We look at our attorney or anyone.
Well, and then also recognizing that if we do direct someone, they're spotted.
I have opinions all over. I'm sure you.
But as as you, we have questions all over the place. Let me just say that this is part of, I don't believe that all those, all our opinions and thoughts need to be expressed at the DAS. And it also allows our a committee of counselors to come together and to navigate some of these items in the present of half four to the rest of the council.
So I just checked with our HR representative here and confirmed that there isn't a city policy that requires that you do a particular recruitment process. So you you can, you could directly appoint some of them. On the subject of a committee to develop the recommendation for council, just one point to remind you would be that if it's a committee that's bringing a recommendation. That committee is also subject to public meetings law. If it's an individual who brings that recommendation, it's not subject to public meetings laws. Just something to think about in terms of how formal the process has to be to bring a recommended process back to the council, which of course would not be meeting at the.
Are you talking about the development of the process or the actual process?
The development of the process.
Okay.
So if you have a subcommittee of council that is bringing, working together to bring a recommendation to council. That committee itself is subject to options.
But the interview and the actual selection could be done.
That can all be done in executive session. Once the city council approves hiring criteria and gives public the opportunity to weigh in on that. And post the vacancy, either for the interim or for the permanent position, that can all be done in executive session.
That was true. So we can't say we cannot have an ad hoc committee.
We're talking about interim or we're talking.
What we're talking just for interim.
At any, any group of, any group that's more than one, that is is voting as a majority to or working as a committee. To bring a recommendation to city council. Just like a planning commission recommendation to city council.
But if we, if we, if we instead like saying, I'm just going to throw out names, so not not intending for this, but let's say it was Angie and myself and. Someone else on staff. That would not be subject or would it be subject?
If it's if it's more than one person.
So just just one person.
If you say, if you say.
Yep.
Counselor, ma'am, please.
Yep.
Consult the staff as you, but we want you to bring back a recommendation.
I thought maybe.
To pass forward for council, it's either you can empower me, well, you can empower anyone on council, but I I would ask as mayor to be. Each person who works with staff to develop a process to promote those to the rest of you. Or if you are okay with a public process, I'm okay with it. We can have two additional counselors.
We need to vote on that.
This is for the interim.
This is just for interim, and believe me, we're not going to come back with me appointing anybody.
Right.
It's just, it's just the process.
Council, that's the point.
Yeah, but yes.
I'm fine.
I'm asking for time to work with.
Yeah.
We have too much time.
All right.
So just to understand what we're, so we're going to have a group?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Jordan, talk to a couple of the potential candidates. I think we all are aware of would be potential candidates. And figure out a proper process that we can ask council to go into, uh, probably some sort of discussion or interview. Have to be able to develop a process. We're good.
Yeah.
Mayor will, mayor will work with staff to develop the process for.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know this is messy. I'm sorry for.
It's not messy.
I I do, I do care about making sure that, and yeah, we have great staff here. I obviously a great council. I do care about leaving Sandy in a good place, so any way I can help with this transition.
You just love it when a relationship breaks up and they're like, it's not you.
Yes. All right, is that very far?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Jordan. Yeah, I really appreciate everything you do. I'll take this as your recognition part of you.
I don't need one of those.
Really proud of you. Thank you.
Well, hopefully you saw the news about the Oregon health authorities ruling against legacy. They rolled completely in line with everything we've been saying and. The statute is kind of weak in terms of the penalties. There really isn't a clearly defined penalty. And I brought that up to our reps at our Sandy, at our Smokey Heart. Dinner the other night. But I got a credit O H A, they found a loophole, so they are actually opening a separate investigation into legacy. For Medicare fraud. Because of not being certified and collecting Medicare and Medicaid payments opens them up for that. So I think they found their big stick.
Oh, boy.
And yeah.
Does that would be federal?
Yeah, they found a big stick, so hopefully, uh, things, things get worked out. I can see it, so said they're, uh, they're they're really trying to figure out what to do now. But meanwhile, things stay on the burbs and. That situation's not good if you're expecting to get time in the near future. That's my report. Yeah, I'm gonna keep it short tonight, uh, to say that. Jordan, you're the fourth, uh, city manager that I have the privilege of working with and say, you're the only one that's more bald than I. Beyond that, I'll save the list for.
That's full head of hair.
City manager.
He's never known, do you?
Dawn's statement, I have a really good friend whose daughter had to go to hospital to deliver baby. It was an hour and twenty minutes to get there. And if you're below those, get it done right now. We've got problems. Very scary, so. The map, obviously, that's it for me.
Um, the library folks are meeting, uh, this coming week or in about a week on the library budget. That Sarah's proposing for our budget process. The Kiwanis are having their Easter egg hunt on, uh, Saturday, Easter, April eighth. Um, in the morning, so, uh, they're also getting help from the D thirty one foundation. So that's, uh, happening Thursday, Saturday morning at ten o'clock. Zero to twelve year old, so, um, let folks know about that. Um, appreciate the Clackamas dinner. It was good. I'm sorry it's late. I did go to the, uh, open house for the parks stuff because that's my passion, but I appreciate. Uh, that it was inside when I got there. It's not outside. It's true, I'm sure.
You only knew all the.
Sure, and I think, I think the owners of Smokey Heart several times and said, I hope, I hope we made you whole, you know. So, um, but I think that was really nice. It was a nice touch and excellent food. So thank you for the staff putting all that together. Um, I'm looking forward to, uh, my, I don't know what number, solve cleanup for Earth Day this time. And I'm sure there's some homeless camps that Stan and I could go out there and clean up together like we have in the past. And and then I just want to thank everybody for the open house. I was, um, it's been doing very well. I'm very excited about how how much participation there's been. You know, there's folks are so pumped for the new facilities. I'm hearing great things on Facebook and really excited about it. So, yep. Good spring, wishing it would stop snow.
Sorry, what spring?
Play the spring break.
Mayor, I did want to forgot to mention that, um, next time we meet in council is my wife's birthday.
Yeah.
Bleep age, so very important days, so I think we won't be there unless there's a real big crisis.
All right.
This last Wednesday, I gave a talk, uh, for the chamber on homeless, uh, was a packed house. So, uh, I think it's a pretty hot topic in the community. Thanks to both Lieutenant Sean Lundry and then Nupa from the ant farm. They interjected, you know, in some great points. We were able to give about an hour and a half presentation. So, um, lots of good questions. I think it was a good opportunity to kind of let different business people in town, including some people who own industrial space and whatnot, kind of the decisions that we've made and why. And kind of what we're doing moving forward, and then also explaining to them some of the laws that we're bound by, and and I think it was really well received, so. Really well, so we'll see if anything comes of that. There was a person in attendance who's a counselor here in town, and she deals specifically with homeless and then also mental illness and. Text trafficking, so I'll get her contact information and. Next time we have a task force meeting, I'd like her to be invited. I think she's got some good information, but. That's all I got.
I don't have anything on the planning commission meeting in the last thirty days, so the next one, I think, is at the near the end of this month, and then. No economic development meeting either. It's taking place this week, Wednesday, so I'll have more report next week.
I keep forgetting. So Lucy, just love going to that. And I don't, what do you call the silent dance thing that?
Silent disco.
Silent disco. Uh, that was, that was a really cool event that Parks Direct put on, so thank you for that. And, uh, you know, I I just, the county dinner was great. Thank you for everybody for attending to doing that, uh, being part of that discussion and. Tonight's discussion reminded me one of the things I said there, which was, you know, uh, we all definitely have our own opinions. That was certainly on display with the parks fee conversation. Um, but we also have something that I really appreciate, which is we start talking for it all, and then we are all. Just scrapping to find consensus, right? And I think that we, you know, even in that conversation, which I didn't know how we were going to get there, you know. And we still have another meeting to do. We want some information, but, you know, to get back, we're barely close to consensus on a direction. And I just, you know. Uh, you guys, I I'm a dork. I watch a lot of councils and hairy bodies. That's pretty unique, uh, to this community and to our council. And I just want to say, I just really appreciate everyone for coming in with a willingness to listen, debate, talk. But most importantly, try to find consensus on issues and not to just, you know, really alive in the sand and not be able to get off of it. And not be able to come behind some sort of path forward that we can all, so very much appreciate that. That'll bring me, thank you.